Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees December 9th to order. Could we please have the roll?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Collin?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Torpey?
Here.
Also in attendance Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and myself Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin which is to go into executive session.
Resolution 2013-285, a resolution authorizing an executive session at the December 9th, 2013 meeting of the Board of Trustees. President Torpey?
The three matters on agenda for closed session is, excuse me, the South Orange Parking Authority appointments, which is a personnel matter, statutory board appointments, which is a personnel matter, and property tax disabled veterans exemption, which is anticipated litigation.
I move.
A motion by Trustee Collin, seconded by Trustee Levison, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back out here at 8 o'clock.[108.82]
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. Could we please have a roll?
Trusty Clark?
Here.
Trusty Cullen?
Here.
Trusty Davis Ward? Ms. Abson? Trusty Levinson?
President.
Trusty Rosner?
Here.
Trusty Schnell?
Here.
Village President Turpik?
Here.
Barry Lewis, Village Administrator. Stephen Rother, Village Counsel. Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator. And myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk.
Thank you. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Just a final reminder that Village offices are now located at 76 South Orange Ave. All of our meetings, all the televised meetings are here in Sopac. All the other Village offices and any committee meetings or anything that isn't televised are in the conference rooms at 76 South Orange Ave. On the third floor. You can also go into the Parking Authority. Now they're accepting renewal applications up until January 7th. You can go visit the Parking Authority, which is at the Baird Center at 5 Mead Street. Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. If you have any questions about that, you can contact the Parking Authority at 973-378-7715, extension 2037. Or send an email to nrodriguez@southorange.org. We are calling for volunteers. We have a number of vacancies on a number of different committees and boards. Including our Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, Citizens Public Safety Committee, Public Information and Marketing Committee. Please visit southorange.org. You can find the volunteer links on the left-hand side of the website. I'm sure to learn a little bit more about the volunteer opportunities that are available. There are even more available than that. So if you're interested in doing so, please visit the website and check that out. Just a reminder about our holiday hours, just in case we don't get the chance to remind folks at the next meeting. We will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th, as well as Wednesday, January 1st. I also want to remind everyone that tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. at Above Restaurant and Bar. The South Orange Village Center Alliance is having their annual meeting and holiday party. So all are welcome to attend the meeting. And I think there's going to be some light refreshments served as well. We have one proclamation this evening. And I don't know if folks are here to... Oh, great. So I'll read the proclamation. We're doing this a little bit ahead of time to make sure we get everything together. This is recognizing January 11th as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Whereas human trafficking is a borderless crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of every shred of personal freedom. Whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, and other types of mental and physical enslavement. Whereas human traffickers target impoverished and marginalized children, women, and men, isolating them from society and supportive networks, and exploiting them for personal and monetary gain. Whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, a crime that is in direct opposition to the fundamental principles of liberty and human rights upon which our nation was founded, and a violation of the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the underground nature of human trafficking makes data collection very difficult. However, the United Nations International Labor Organization has estimated that more people are now harmed by human trafficking worldwide than ever at any point in human history. With approximately 80% of the victims women and girls, and 50% younger than 18 years old. Whereas we recognize that New Jersey is a prime location for human trafficking because it is a major national, international transportation corridor and a culturally diverse state. Whereas many victims trafficked into the U.S. do not speak or understand English, and are unable to communicate or seek rescue. Under New Jersey and U.S. law, any person under 18 involved in the commercial sex industry is considered a human trafficking victim. And victims include U.S. citizens and documented immigrants. And whereas although the federal government and the state of New Jersey have enacted laws to prosecute human traffickers and protect the survivors, traffickers use techniques to keep their victims enslaved that severely limit self-reporting and that require broad public awareness of this issue for enforcement and prevention. Whereas Township of South Orange Village commends the work of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking for its statewide efforts to end human trafficking through education, advocacy, and assistance to survivors, and to increase coordination and visibility of New Jersey's commitment to end human trafficking. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Village President of the Township of South Orange Village on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire village, does hereby proclaim January 11th of each year as Human Trafficking Awareness Day, committed to protecting human rights and individual freedom by supporting the goals and ideals of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking throughout New Jersey and across the nation. If you'd like to come up and say a few words. Did you want to do a quick photo?
Yes, and I... Thank you. Shall I speak?
Yeah, we can do the photo now if you'd like.
Okay.
Is that the person?
Yes. We... I'm Clara Sarnow of Maplewood, and Alice Solomon and Ida Chadro of South Orange are here today representing Hadassah Women's Organization of Maplewood and South Orange as it fights human trafficking in New Jersey. Hadassah Women's Organization encourages its members to advocate on behalf of women's health everywhere. National Hadassah has more than 300,000 members in the U.S., and in Maplewood, South Orange, we have 600 members. We are one of 70 organizations, including law enforcement agencies such as the FBI, and volunteer groups such as ours, which are part of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking mentioned in this proclamation. We commend the South Orange Village Board of Trustees for recognizing the terrible problem of slavery nowadays in our state. This proclamation will help to make the problem better known to the public. Since human trafficking succeeds best in secret, the Board of Trustees' action will help to short-circuit this crime through public awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation, which I think we're all very excited to be able to bring to everyone tonight. We're going to be joined by some students from Seton Hall University to talk a little bit about Reimagining Irvington Ave. If you guys would like to come up.
Good evening. My name is Vito Amato. I'm a Senior Marketing Major at Seton Hall University.
Hello, my name is Theo Filardi. I'm a junior. I'm a finance major and a marketing major.
And tonight, Theo and I will be discussing our findings from Reimagine Irvington Avenue Project. But first of all, I want to thank the South Orange Board of Trustees for having us here tonight and for working with us throughout this entire semester. It was really a pleasure to work with you, and we're really excited to be working on this project. And we hope to come back in the future and see our work being implemented and our suggestions come to life. So without further ado, Reimagine Irvington Ave. So the goal of Reimagine Irvington Ave was to... The Board of Trustees came to us, Seton Hall University, to research the happenings on Irvington Ave. They needed insights and data on the key stakeholders of Irvington Ave. And those key stakeholders are the Seton Hall community, the residents of the Irvington Ave corridor, and the business owners on the corridor. So the business issue was, what do the key stakeholders of Irvington Ave think about the corridor, and what do they want for the future? So, and we split that up into three groups. The first group was for the Seton Hall community, the second for the residents, and the third for the business owners. So there was three separate business issues that focused on these stakeholders of the Irvington Ave corridor. So our methodology consisted of conducting focus groups. So the Seton Hall groups went out to recruit potential focus group members. The Seton Hall community just got some students, faculty, and other members of the Seton Hall community to attend our focus group in the Market Research Center of the university. The residents went out into the neighborhood and went door-to-door to get some residents to come out to our focus group. And the business owners also went on foot down the corridor to recruit the business owners to come into the focus group. And the focus group, it was, it was, one of the challenges was to get the business owners and the residents to come. Especially the business owners, because they are on such a tight schedule. Some of them are understaffed. So it was difficult for them to come out. But all in all, it was a positive experience. And the second part of this research project was to provide surveys for more in-depth research with regards to these stakeholders and their opinions of the Irvington Ave corridor. So the president of Irvington Ave took some snapshots of Irvington Ave. And we have, what we focused on was the major parts of Irvington Ave, from one corner to the next, from the Blue Plate Special Corner all the way to the Encozi Cafe Corner. And even further down towards the gateway to South Orange, as we call it, towards, closer towards Academy Street. So we looked for similarities in our data, our qualitative data primarily. And what we found was a lot of similarities between the Seton Hall community and the resident community, as well as the business community, but more so the residents and the Seton Hall community. And what generally people from this, from all of these stakeholders wanted to see were the changes that they wanted included, new businesses, township events, and more events such as business variety. And I'll go on from here, the current perceptions of Irvington Ave. Safety was a major issue for the residents and the Seton Hall community, even more so the Seton Hall community. The Seton Hall students have a Pirate Alert system, which is a text service in which they get text messages from the university with regards to any of the off-campus crime that's going on. And for the most part, in recent months, we haven't been getting that many alerts. But in the past, it's been instilled, because we've seen so many alerts on the Irvington Ave corridor, that Irvington Ave is a place that students should avoid, especially at night. So safety is the primary concern for this group. However, safety for the business owners was not necessarily a primary aspect that they wanted to focus on. Because they felt safe. However, if the customers and the students, students represent a customer base, if they aren't feeling safe, then they're not going to be there to give business to the business owners. Another thing regarding safety is the lighting. In our focus groups and in our surveys, we noticed a lot of comments on the lighting. How there's a lack of bright lights, it's pitch dark, especially now that it's beginning, it's getting darker quicker. So it really impedes the students to go even more. So, so what we noticed is that the safety could be, the lighting could attribute to a better safety. Next was the aesthetics, and this was the cleanliness of the streets, the buildings, the sidewalks, and the outdated buildings. Generally, people perceived the corridor as being dirty, outdated, old, and not appealing to the eye. So that's another general perception. And then the business variety. The stores are not enticing enough for the general public, according to our qualitative data. They don't know that some of the businesses are even there. There's no real signage for people to see, oh, well, what's, what's this place? I've never seen this before. And it's actually really, it's a shame, because some of these restaurants and businesses are great. There's good quality food, the service is great, they're very intimate, and they like to see the Seton Hall students and the residents come by their businesses. And we don't necessarily, we don't really know that they're even there. And now I'm going to pass it over to Theo.
All right, so I'll be focusing more on where we see Irvington Ave in the future. Now, some of the things that our three groups found was that we wanted to see new businesses. Now, this was especially affecting the residents, as well as the Seton Hall community. Where on Irvington Ave currently, you might have a couple of hair salons, a couple of Chinese takeout restaurants. You've got, you know, La La Bella and Blue Plate Special. The students really wanted to see a bigger variety of business on the avenue. They wanted to see coffee shops that were open early enough for them to go get a coffee before their 9 o'clock a.m. class. They wanted to see sports bars that they could go to at night, instead of having to walk all the way down to the South Orange main area down here, over by Stonies, or even over to, going to see Above. And they wanted to see if we could get some chain restaurants in, such as like, something like a Panera or a Chipotle. These groups, especially again, the Seton Hall group, really have a lot to gain by improving the Irvington Ave area. Whereas the Seton Hall's main district down here, the main attractions down on Foe's Avenue and over there, are great things for the students to go to. It's about a mile away from campus, and it makes much more sense for them to be able to go down to Irvington Ave. It's closer, realistically, we can make it safer. And it would be just a great corridor for business, should we make some improvements to the area. Now, some of the improvements that we thought would draw out a lot of students and a lot of current residents were events. There's a farmer's market that occurs in the parking lot across from here. We thought that was a great thing. A lot of students who live off-campus, directly in that little area around Irvington Ave. You know, there are people who are maybe getting off of campus because they want to have kitchens and be able to cook. And being able to have a farmer's market right there, and instead of having to go all the way down to Ashley's Gourmet Market down here, or go over to Pathmark, it would be a convenient thing to have the farmer's markets right over there. And additionally, we thought something like street fairs would be a good idea to have. I don't know if you guys have ever been to a street fair where you see nice cultural foods coming out. It could be a really good event to draw on the community. And that was one of the things we saw was really lacking in the Irvington Ave area. Was a sense of community, a sense of togetherness between the students and between the residents of the area. Something that could be definitely improved upon in the future by installing these new events. Now, some of the short-term recommendations that we had, that could be implemented very quickly and improve the area tremendously, were cleaning up. I don't know if you've walked down Irvington Ave recently, but if you do, you might see hairballs on the street. You might see a little bit of litter around. That's recently improved a lot. There have been trash cans put down on Irvington Ave. There's been less litter. It generally looks cleaner. There's still a long ways to go, but it's definitely been an improvement. Additionally, there could be some slightly longer-term ideas, would be like repaving streets, putting in new sidewalks. If you've been down Fairview Ave recently, doing something along those lines, putting islands in to slow down traffic. That's another complaint that we got a lot from the residents, was that car traffic was too fast in the area, and it was dangerous either for them to walk across streets, or for the children to walk across streets. They really had an issue with safety with car traffic. Which brings me to my next point about adding a police patrol. Now, if you're walking down Irvington Ave and you get to shake hands with a police officer, and get to know his face, and get to feel safe in the area, knowing that he's there to protect you, it's definitely something that's going to encourage you to go there more often. Especially when the current perception of Irvington Ave is a place that's not safe, where robberies might occur. Generally a place to avoid at night. Having a police patrol there between the hours of 10 o'clock p.m. and 3 o'clock a.m. would be something that would definitely encourage not only Seton Hall residents to go through the area, but residents of the local community as well. Again, back to the lighting, like Vito mentioned. It's, it's very dark, especially on the side streets going into Irvington Ave. And Irvington Ave itself, it's dark, it's not something where you're going to go feel safe, being able to see, you know, even 30 feet ahead of you. One of the things we thought would be to make the gas lamps that aren't currently there, mostly as aesthetic pleasures to the eye, they do look very nice, to make them actually brighter and useful. Seton Hall on campus recently replaced the gas bulbs with electric bulbs that look like gas, but are much brighter and serve a better function to the community. We thought that would be something that could be looked into going forward. Lastly, again with the community feel, something that we really noticed was that there was a lack of communication between these three key stakeholders. There were no meetings set up between residents and the Seton Hall community. There are no meetings set up between residents and the business owners. And we really thought that creating some kind of forum for these three groups to come together would be something that would function and serve a great need in the area. To not only develop the areas, making it nicer, but to increase communication between these three stakeholders would provide for much better improvements in the area. So longer-term recommendations. When we did our survey, our quantitative survey, our group looked into, I represent specifically the resident group, looked into doing a redevelopment of the buildings along South Orange Ave, Irvington Ave, I apologize. And we found that there was support for doing major redevelopment to the area. You know, either bringing the buildings down and building them up again in the long run, kind of like they're doing over by the train station now, under the bridge. Or doing something a little less dramatic, and, you know, putting new facades on the buildings. This, long-term, would be an idea that would bring a lot of foot traffic into the area, because it would increase residents in the area. By necessity, these residents would have to spend time in the area and shop, and really liven up the neighborhood. Additionally, the repaving the streets, as I mentioned before. If you decide to do a project where you're not only redesigning the street and redesigning traffic flow, it's going to make the area much more navigable to foot traffic, which is something that is vital to livening up the area. And one of the more difficult recommendations would be to change the name of Irvington Ave. And not only in our focus groups, but in our surveys, we noticed that there was a strong dislike of the connotation of Irvington Ave. That Irvington, the name Irvington, brought along with it a sense of fear, a sense of non, feeling unsafe, and a sense of dirty, dirtiness, really. dirtiness really. And we thought some of the, you know, key changes could be something to like University Avenue or Village Terrace Avenue, something that really when you hear it, you think of a place you want to be, a place where you want to spend time, a place where you want to spend your money, somewhere where you want to go and really feel comfortable in a community setting. Now, a future image comparatively, if you look at Jersey City, or if you look at Hoboken, especially on Washington Avenue and Hoboken, you're going to see a community that's really together, a place where college students go to spend time, where residents of these cities go to spend time, spend money, go to a nice restaurant, sit down to have a meal, go to see a sports game, things along that line. And we really thought that there's a great potential for Irvington Avenue to be the next Washington Avenue, to be a place where you're going to go, where you're going to want to be there, when you're going to want to go back after you visit your next time instead of trying to stay away from the area. We thought it would be, you know, a great place to be if some of these redevelopments are made. If you look in the picture, you see the time clock on the left with buildings that have storefronts on the bottom and apartments rising above. Our survey put out a question saying, would you like to see something like this in the area? Would this be appealing to you? And we got about 36% of respondents saying yes. They would like to see this. They would like to see, you know, new businesses, young businesses, a new breath into the community really. That's our presentation. We hope that some of these recommendations kind of find their way into your hearts that let you think about them, something that you might want to see in the future. Thank you. Now, my last note, as part of this project, we decided to create an Instagram account. I don't know if you know what Instagram is, but it's an online service that allows you to take pictures and share them socially. We also created a hashtag saying reimagine Irvington Avenue. Now, a hashtag is an idea, a thought that can be captured and attached to the picture. It's a tool that we thought might be able to be used in the future for residents and Seton Hall students and anybody who really might want to, to go down to Irvington Avenue, take a picture of something that they might want to see changed, or something that they might think could be improved upon in the future, and make it vocal, be vocal about it, make sure that somebody's seeing their ideas, and maybe, you know, in the future, those ideas can be acted upon. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, we want to thank Dr. Adam Warner for directing us throughout the entire presentation project as well.
Dr. Warner, would you like to come up and just say a couple comments?
Put him on the spot.
We just appreciate this partnership, and I'd like to see that. I'd like the community to know who you are.
Just make sure you go right into the microphone.
Come up here, Adam.
How about this one?
That's a five.
Okay. So, I just want to say thank you to the board for inviting the students and the university to be involved in this project. I think probably my biggest takeaway is Irvington Avenue, a lot of people said it's got a lot of potential. I'm just curious, sort of, for this group, I mean, how many people in this room live within 15 minutes of Irvington Avenue?
Everybody.
Okay. So, I mean, so, I'm thinking that the things that the students learned in this presentation and during the course of this research were, you know, right now, some of the things were, it's like, you know, neglected stepchild or something like that. But, and that's on one hand, on the other hand, they said it's got a lot of potential. And I like the way Theo and Vito put it, there's some short-term fixes that, you know, I don't need, know that you need to have, you know, 20 meetings about, that you can probably-
We'll do it anyway, though.
Yeah. You can probably fix pretty quickly. And then the second part is there's more longer-term fixes. But I think you've got a real potential jewel out in the community that, you know, with a little love, it can probably be a real jewel. So, again, thank you for having us participate, and, you know, we'll look forward to seeing it. Also, I know one thing was really nice about this collaboration. I know sometimes I'm not from the area. You can probably tell I'm not even from New Jersey with this accent. But it was a great collaboration between Seton Hall and the township. And so, we're very appreciative of inviting us to do that. So, again, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things. First, definitely want to thank Theo, Vito, and I see Gloria in the back also. For the residents and those who are kind of new to this whole reimagine Irvington Avenue project, we began this a few months ago when the Board of Trustees sat down and met with the Market Research Center and said that Irvington Avenue was going to be a priority for this Board of Trustees moving forward, and we wanted your participation in helping us get feedback from the community. From that point, as Vito pointed out, we broke up into three different groups, the Seton Hall Group to assess students, faculty and staff, the resident group, meaning neighborhoods that directly surrounded Irvington Avenue, and then also the business owners and the property owners, knowing that all three stakeholders, we needed their buy-in to truly bring about some changes to this corridor. And I'm so excited to say that through the outreach of the Market Research Center, we touched nearly 600 residents and customers and business owners. As most in South Orange will remember, maybe about 2010, we did a vision plan. And it costs substantial dollars, and there was a lot of community conversations. And this project, by using this class, reached significantly more people in our community to get that sort of feedback than even our entire Central Business District vision plan. So, they were very successful. You've seen, tonight's presentation was very, very much condensed. We received tons of qualitative and quantitative research that we're hoping to post to the website, show you all the different presentations, the full presentations from each of the three student groups. And then later on tonight in the conference agenda, we'll be discussing the next steps. Also, on a very positive note, for Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, we received close to 25 volunteers who want to be involved and serve on this committee. Through the resident survey, another 50 volunteered. So, all in, we have a significant amount of people within our own community who don't want government to just fix problems. They want to, you know, join hand in hand and work with us on this. So, I think on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we just thank everybody who partnered with us, along with Professor Warner. There's also the Dean of the Business School, Joyce Strouzer, who is a resident of this community. And she has committed that moving forward with this project that the Business School will maintain being involved with us as partners, and hopefully we'll start seeing some really significant changes. So, again, thank you so much to the students. This has been very exciting for us, and I've enjoyed every step of the way, and especially Professor Warner and the Market Research Center. You guys did an amazing job.
If I could just briefly, I want to echo, I think trustee columns, and then I just wanted to give a quick shout out to, because again, this presentation doesn't even scratch the surface of how hard all these students worked. So, and again, there was three teams of five students on the neighborhood. It was Miriam Bonilla, Theo Filardi, Ryan Heda, Takaya Kennedy, and Elise Ostrom, who I had the pleasure of working with that five, and it was a great experience. On the Seton Hall team, and to the extent the people that worked on that team, that was John DeLisandro, Marcus Suarez, Mia Zhu, Ji Chen Yang, and Gloria Blanco, who's with us tonight, and from the business group, Vito Amato, who's also here tonight, Eric Ortiz, Nazari Romero, Amy Rue, and Yenney Tao. And they all really, just an extraordinary amount of enthusiasm, hard work, and we appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys. And thank you again for doing this and for working with us. I think all of us, I think all the trustees, all of our department heads, everybody who works for the village, all of the residents want to see more partnerships like this. And we're really excited to be able to do this with you, and really thank you for all the energy and time that you guys put in. And hopefully, this will be the first of many chances that we get to work more together. So, thank you, guys, again. And I'm going to have to look up that Instagram thing, whatever that is. Okay. So, at this time, this is our first of two, actually more than that tonight, public comment sections. I'll be happy to read through the names just so folks know. If you do want to make a public comment, you can do so now. And if any of you are here to speak about any of the ordinances that are on for second reading, there's also a public hearing during that portion. There really isn't a difference depending on when you'd like to make your comment, now or at that time. But you do have two opportunities to do so, if for some reason you don't get to make a comment now. I'm going to go through the list here. If we could just ask folks to remember to introduce yourself and your address for the record, and also to keep your comments to three minutes so we can make sure to get to everybody tonight. The first name I have is Pat Joyce. And if you're not signed up on the list, you're still obviously free to speak after we go through it.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Joyce. I live at 13 Husky Road. I'm coming to speak about the charter amendment, the reading on second, the second reading of the ordinance. In the mid 2000s, early 2000s, the question came up about compensation for Board of Trustees. I was a volunteer member of the Board of Trustees at that time. I thought it was a very bad idea at that time. I still think it's a very bad idea. And I think to amend the charter, and to do so, you should have some very good reasons to do it. I think my initial thought about why it was a bad idea is I'm just an old lefty, you know. And when I was in college, we used to say that any baker should be able to run the government. And the trustees always felt like someone would come in, take their period of time, do what they had to do. They could be insurance people, they could be, you know, prescription counter people, they could be lawyers, whatever it was, they take their time, do their work, and then move on. Although it was a very bad idea to create any type of professional politician in this town. And the concern I had back then had to do with the pension system. I think that that system may be changed a little bit, but I'm still very concerned about the pension issue. If in fact, a compensated trustee goes over the threshold and can work for a period of time, I'm afraid that it can accrue time for pension, and I think it's a very bad idea. So, I asked my question, so you asked the question, why? And a good friend of mine, Dan Schelfo, thinks that you get what you pay for. And if you don't pay the trustees, what might you get? And I take that as a criticism that Dan has with me, but I didn't take it too personally. But I know three of you very well, and I ask you to ask yourselves, when you first ran, did you think about being compensated? Did you think about wanting to be compensated? The three of you who I know well, I think the answer is absolutely not. Compensation didn't come into the picture at all. And if that's true, then why are you so interested in attracting people who are so different from yourselves in running for trustee? I think we want, I've heard the word volunteer used 30 times already tonight. You're asking for people in this village to come out and volunteer and volunteer and volunteer. I think you're on a much stronger moral ground if you two remain volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Robert Chandros?
Good evening. Robert Chandros, 108 West Montrose Avenue, 42 years, I might add. My reason for speaking tonight has to do with the arrangement with Zipcar. When I first heard about this, I was very puzzled as to why Zipcar would find it necessary to use public property as a place from which to rent cars. And the more I thought about it, and the more I looked into what was being said about it, the more disturbed I became. First of all, there are private enterprises in South Orange that are located relatively close to the railroad station that have space, and I don't know that they were ever approached to do this. Secondly, I was very concerned about the fact that there was no ordinance or resolution ever put before the public, that there was no comment made by the village attorney or the chair of the village legal committee concerning this, and that this also bothered me. Why would you give up two prime parking spaces right across from the railroad station to a profit-making corporation? If they want space in the village, there's adequate spaces. An Exxon gas station, there's the Ridge Tire, there's the car repair place right up the street from Ridge Tire, all of which may very well have space to be used, and the money would go to the private sector, not to the village government. In addition, there was no competitive bid for this. There are other car rental companies. None of them were asked to bid. And the more I read about the comments, the more disturbed I became. There is the potential for a very large legal liability to the village should something happen involving a Zipcar in the parking lot. Yet, this was never discussed. We don't know as taxpayers what the arrangement is. We've never seen a contract. We don't know to what extent the Zipcar people have absolved the village. We don't know the duration of this contract, and we just really don't know anything. And to me, that smacks of the kind of government we don't want in South Orange. And I ask you therefore, what have you got to hide? If it's just a great idea that you wanted to implement immediately, why didn't you bring it up at a Board of Trustees meeting? Why didn't you have your attorney comment? Why didn't you provide any information to us about the potential for these things? Now, I'm very disturbed. I filed an Oprah request with the village clerk's office because I didn't see anything in writing. And after hemming and hawing to me, they sent me back an email saying, there are no documents to fulfill your request, which means there is no ordinance, there is no contract. So, what are you hiding? Why is there no contract made available for us to see? Why was there no effort to get Zipcar to rent space from a private enterprise? We have a shortage of parking, and yet you want to give space up in a prime location to a profit-making business? To me, this is just a very, very bad decision. And I would ask that you immediately hold hearings as part of these meetings, that you immediately provide information to the community. Otherwise, I'm going to have to go to the president of Avis Budget Cars, and I'm quite prepared to contact-
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, who is the chairman and chief executive, and Mr. Tucker, who is the general counsel of that corporation, and ask them, do they understand what exactly is involved here, since you're not willing to tell us?
Thank you. Leslie Pagani?
Leslie Pagani. I live at 10 Hard Drive, and I'm a lifelong resident and a volunteer for many, many years in this village. And I've seen trustees come and go on this board of, as Patrick said, lawyers, every walk of life. And I've seen elections come and go. And it doesn't seem that we have any lack of candidates wanting the job, knowing what it pays for the trustees. I happen to think at this point in this town, we're taxed too much. And to think that you might look at, as Patrick mentioned, that there might be a pension eventually attached. If this, it starts out at 1,800, and it gets raised with a cost of living raise per year, at some point, this may be a pension job. The, if the state says at 1,800 you get a pension, then you have to abide by state law. But more importantly, it shouldn't be a job for life. It should be a job that you look at to allow other people to volunteer, as we've seen through various elections, the talent that has gone for this job. And at the last Board of Education, we had a great turnout for this, and this is a non-paying job too. I can see that many, many, many villagers, you just mentioned that 50 residents want to volunteer to be on this Irvington Avenue Committee. You mentioned all the people in this town that want to volunteer. It's a blessing. It's a wonderful village. And I think sometimes when you put a pay scale on something, it leaves a little bit of the heart out of it. So, that's my comment to the trustees, and I hope you think about that when you go for a vote. And when they did the vote, it was very, very close. It was almost a 50-50. So, please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Stephanie Kennedy?
I've lived at 388 Meadow Brook Lane for 48 years, 42 years, I'm sorry. And I am here concerning the pay to the trustees. My feeling is that this should be a volunteer job. You had, you don't want anyone to serve for more than three years to be paid. You don't want them to have a pension. I can't see why the trustees should be paid to- I can't see why the trustees should be paid to serve. I think it should be a volunteer job like it has been for decades and decades, and you should be proud to volunteer for the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary, sorry, I can't read the last name.
Hillary Gill, 263 Tuller Road. I've been in this town for 60-plus years, and I came to this meeting very concerned. And I don't want to spend a lot of time because the first gentleman, Richard, and then Leslie, really iterated everything I have to say. I do not think the board should become political, because once you're involved with the state, the county and the state, and then we have the elections in November, it becomes a political group. And we are all political anyway. But I don't think we need to go vote for the politics in November. And that's all I have to say. And I really hope you reconsider it. And I didn't like that no one really knew what was going on, not publicized. I don't always go to the website, so I read the news record, and I didn't know about it. And I know about it a lot, I've been here a very long time.
Thank you. Bob Adler?
It's on that same ordinance, Mr. President, so I'll speak at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Ritu?
Hi, I'm Ritu Pancholi, I live at 234 South Ridgewood in South Orange. I'm a newer resident compared to the other people here, but I came for my first time to this meeting as well because of the ordinance to pay the trustees and the mayor in the future, or village president. I'm just a little confused about what the history of this is, and I was wondering if someone could explain it perhaps afterwards or during as to what sort of led to the process to actually pay the trustees and when the vote was, because I've been pretty active in the past four years by voting at most of the elections, so I'm just very, very confused. And there hasn't been a lot in the record about what happened to actually cause this change. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be addressing all of these, and we'll review the history and discuss when we get in a few moments to that place on the agenda, so we'll make sure to do that. Tom Kelly?
I think the prior speakers covered what I wanted to say in the charter amendment.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa Aronson?
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Aronson. Good evening, Mayor Alex Paul Torpey, trustees, railroad castle dictator. My name's Alyssa Aronson, I'm a longtime resident of this township. I want to know what the BLT's plan is to reimagine Irvington Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Aronson, we'll cover that, it's under my report, under the conference agenda, and we'll be discussing it then.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Yep, just come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Timothy Hoffman, I'm from Seton Hall University, I'm part of the Student Government Association. I was here two meetings ago talking about our ideas to really work together with the village coming forward, and I'm pleased to announce that tonight, the Student Government Association approved a new village relations committee, and we're hoping that next semester we'll be able to really work with you going forward on getting on committees. I know our president, Joseph Denado, met with trustee column and village president Torpey, and that was a great meeting between you guys. So I'm really hoping that we can move forward on this in the coming year, and I just would like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays on behalf of the student government. Thank you.
Thank you.
To you too, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Hi, George Berkeley at 4 South Orange Avenue. My comments are real quick, and there are only two. One, during the Irvington Avenue discussion from the Seton Hall folks, I thought it was interesting that most of you were looking at your PCs and not closing them down and looking at the speaker or looking at what was presented. I have to really tell you, you really have to engage these people. They had a lot of important stuff to say that you should hear, not what you're looking at on those PCs. My second comment is real simple, and that's about this getting payment for it. Personally, I have no problem with out-of-pocket expenses, but getting paid a stipend or a fee for it has a little bit of a problem for me because of the political stuff that kicks in at the higher level. That's my only comment, please think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. As far as the charter review updates, we're going to discuss that in a moment when we get to that point in the agenda. There was another question about Zipcar, which I can address right now. And so this is, there were a couple of points that I'll try and cover. One is that this is a year-to-year basis, there was no long-term agreement with Zipcar. The reason why, we didn't discuss it here is because it was discussed in the Parking Authority Board meetings, their commissioners. So that was on the agenda there, they approved a resolution. I apologize if you may have missed that, but after we discussed it here, we realized that actually the appropriate body that the Zipcar would contract with would be the South Orange Parking Authority. So they passed the resolution, and they'll also be signing the contract with them. And, let's see, a couple of other things. As far as I know, there is no liability at all on the village. This is a program that's done across the country, dozens if not hundreds of cities, and there's no liability for the municipality whatsoever to provide this service for people. As far as the, you know, kind of shortage of downtown parking spaces, I mean, that's certainly something that I think we're all aware of. And one of the reasons why we're doing more economic investment in our downtown to create more parking spaces with the Third and Valley Project, with the Gateway, and with more to come. One of the biggest detractors of investment in a town like South Orange that's transit-oriented and focused is the ability for people to use car sharing programs. So the more that we can market South Orange as a place that people can come and visit easily and get around, especially people coming out of New York City, the better. So that will actually help us bring in economic investment to the town. And at the end of the day, the number of people who would use Zipcar could be in the dozens or hundreds of people, so it's not like there's two spaces that are reserved for nobody, but there's actually many, many people who would be using those spaces, perhaps even more than the number of cars that would be using them if they were just used for parking meters. And on that same note, just so everybody's on the same page, we do, we do expect to earn $1,200 a year per space, per year from Zipcar. That is around a third more than we get from the spaces if someone were to pay for them every single minute of every single day, six days a week, for every single day of the year that the spaces are available, which is obviously not how many people park in the spaces, although it can get pretty crowded sometimes. So we actually earn more revenue by having Zipcar there than not, which is an enormous benefit to the town. And I think on top of that, just to reiterate, just for anybody who may be tuning in for this first time, part of the idea of this program, it is a public-private partnership, and I think it's a public-private partnership that we're proud to be a part of. These are the kind of things that, when we talk about taxes all the time, obviously in this town, and the crushing burden of our property taxes and cost of living in South Orange and Essex County in New Jersey, one of the things that we can do is reduce that cost of living. So, you know, I think what we've done as a government, as a village, as a governing body, is to think beyond just, well, how do we reduce your property taxes, which we only collect 28% of, as I'm sure most of you are aware, anyway. So if we can allow someone, I mean, I talked to a gentleman actually the day that Zipcar was here doing the ribbon cutting, who said, you know, "My wife and I were looking to buy a second car, you know, we need something to get around on the weekends, and we're not really sure what to do, and it's a big expense, and we're not really sure about it, and now that we have Zipcar here, we're not sure we need to buy the car." Car ownership can cost $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 a year for one car, between paying for it, the gas, insurance, and the million other things, maintenance and repairs that go into owning a car. So part of it is not only a reduction of, hopefully, of the burden of the cost of living in this town for people, but there's also a sustainability factor, too. Every vehicle that's manufactured, no matter how many miles per gallon they get, or whether they're electric cars, or compressed natural gas cars, or anything else, there is an enormous amount of energy, an enormous amount of water, that is used to manufacture the pieces of metal, the fiberglass, the plastic that go into making that car. So if we can get one Zipcar and we can take 10 cars off the road, and their figures, which I actually don't remember off the top of my head, are much larger than that, and we can take those cars off the road, you know, we've done an incredible thing for our environment while helping people save money at home and while providing better access to New York City for people that live here, and better access to the town from people from other places. So I think it's an excellent example of what public-private partnerships can do. And again, all the logistics of it were done, you know, completely appropriately. Mr. Rother, I don't know if you'd like to comment on any of that, but right now, the Parking Authority has approved the resolution that was done in a public meeting, and they should be signing the contract, should be signed any day.
No, by appropriate measures, this body has given jurisdiction of our parking lots to the Parking Authority, and they are the appropriate body to engage in that transaction, which they did.
Right.
According to law, at one of their public meetings.
Right. Thank you. So I think the rest of the comments were primarily about the charter, the charter recommendations, which we'll be getting to shortly. I do just want to make sure, I don't know if the Seton Hall students are still in here, don't think so.
Did they leave on so ready?
Yeah, a couple. So I just, I just think that it is totally phenomenal that not only did we have this great presentation from market research tonight, but also, from the students that were involved in that, but also from the student government who's been coming down to our meetings, creating that committee to work closely with us. I know we have an alum of Seton Hall on the board here, which is very exciting.
Oh, pilots.
But, you know, I think this is just a great, great, great step forward for our relationship and what we can do together in the future between our town and the university. So hopefully, we can set, you know, a good example about how universities and towns can work together. So our first order of business for ordinances, we have one.
Mr. President, just to Mr. Berkeley's point, for those of us on laptops, we also look at the agenda and the presentations from here, so if it looks like we're not doing this over here, we have it in front of us also, and we might be going through the screen just for your benefit.
Yeah, to assume that we're not paying attention because we're looking at our computers. It doesn't make any sense. We can get to the ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance 2013-20, this is an ordinance that had been tabled. It's an ordinance to amend the Central Business District redevelopment plan. And do we have a motion to lift this ordinance from the table?
So, do we have a motion to remove it from the table? This was tabled from the last meeting, I believe?
It's on for discussion later on at the conference agenda, you know, for the Planning and Zoning Committee, because we haven't discussed it, and everyone was, I think, sent the revisions from Barry that he got from Susan Grill. So I'm not sure.
So I keep it on table?
Well, I don't think we have a choice, but at the same time, after, if we agree later on at the meeting, then we should also send it to the planning board at the same time, so we can be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting, and then finally pass it in January, and it'll be, if it passes tonight, and then we'll have the feedback from the planning board by the same time.
Well, we can't pass it after we discuss it in conference agenda?
No, next, at the next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine, so we'll leave that on the table, and we can go on to our first ordinance for second reading tonight.
Ordinance for second reading, 2013-19, an ordinance approving a draft revised, newly stated charter for the township of South Orange Village and authorizing the submission of the same to the New Jersey Legislature for enactment into law.
Thank you. So the main points here, and I want to ask trustee column if you wouldn't mind going over some of the history here, because you were on the charter review commission. But so, just very basically, what this ordinance does is make a handful of changes to our charter. A whole bunch of them are really outdated, gender-specific parts of it. There are parts that talk about local laws that are now trumped by state statutes, so there are parts of the charter that are changed to refer to that. And I think there's a whole, many, many changes throughout the document that nobody's really that concerned about, everybody pretty much agrees with. There were a couple of other recommendations that were made originally that have been kind of decoupled from this process, whether through opposition or not. One of them was allowing the village president a vote on the budget, which, when we discussed this, this must have been two years ago, when we first discussed it, after the recommendations came out, I think everybody agreed not to move forward with that, because it's technically the budget that I introduced. And there was also the discussion about moving the election to November, which did get decoupled from this process, too. So the three major things that are on this, that people should make sure to be aware of, that would be changed if this is passed, one is dropping township from the name Township of South Orange Village. The very brief history there is that that was added in, and for one year, for one grant opportunity from the federal government, that was only eligible, only townships in New Jersey were eligible, so like 100 towns in New Jersey added township to their name. I think East Orange is actually the township of East Orange City, there's a whole bunch of towns that did that. It doesn't make any sense, it has no need or use at all these days. And so what I think was the interest in going back to what historically was the designation, which is South Orange Village. The second was changing the titles from village president to mayor, from trustee to council member, and from board of trustees to village council. And also, along with that, just a kind of informal agreement that we may find a different name for Mr. Rother, so there's no confusion between village council and village council. And the third was stipends for the elected officials with no other benefits that would include pensions or anything like that, so it's just for the stipends. And the amount that was put on the ballot for $2,400 for the village president, $1,800 for the trustees, I think was half of what the Charter Review Commission originally recommended. But those are the three major changes that are up for discussion tonight, which we're gonna talk a lot more about to make sure that everybody here can kind of get the full history. Trustee column, if you want to dive right in.
Okay, give me one second, let me just, I've got all my charter review stuff, so we're certainly gonna spend some time on this tonight.
The trustee column was part of the Charter Review Committee, which was formed maybe in late 2010 and went into 2011, it was about a year long. The committee included residents as well as village officials or village clerk, and looked at the entire village charter, even looked to the point of wondering whether we should keep the same type of government that we have. While you're pulling your stuff up, a little interesting fun fact for anybody who's not aware, we are one of the only village forms of government in the state of New Jersey, and the only village form of government that is in exactly the form that we are. So because we're not a Faulkner Act form of government, which is a type of form of government, a type of government, municipal government, that the state has designated, townships are one, boroughs are one, cities are one, for example, we are not part of that. So to get reapproval of our ability to be a municipal government in our form, every 10 years, we're required to review our charter. We don't necessarily have to make any changes, and I think there may have been a few review periods where changes weren't made, but to get it passed, we have to agree on it, pass an ordinance, and then it goes to the state legislature, someone in the assembly has to sponsor a bill, someone in the senate has to sponsor a bill, that has to get voted on, it has to get passed, the governor has to sign it, and so by the time that's all done, we'll be reviewing it again the next time. But that is the process that we have to go through.
I'm ready.
All right.
Okay, so, this actually goes back to, and it was great seeing former trustee Joyce here, certainly a big supporter for me, and having him here and give his feedback was very valuable. When the charter review process began, I was appointed as one of the resident members. I remember the call going out, this only happens in our village once every, I believe, 11 or 12 years. And I remember the announcement of a call for volunteers, and it's like, "Charter review? Of course, sign me up." So I really wanted to be on that committee, because I love the special form of government, understanding government, understanding the village. When I moved here, before attending Seton Hall University, one of the first things I did was read the village charter. Can't believe I just said that on TV, so.
Everybody already did.
It was an exciting process, but it goes back even further. If we go back to 2004, and most of the comments that we heard tonight had to deal with the compensation issue, and that's a really challenging issue, because, and I firmly believe that the volunteers up here, and the ones that have served before us, I've always admired the volunteerism in the village as well. We, any given time, you're spending, on the low end, maybe 10 hours a week, on the high end, maybe 40 or 50 hours a week, if you're Howard, so you've seen really dedicated people. And at least over the past few days, and I've discussed this with former trustee Goldberg as well, because we've jarred over this issue, we jarred when I was a committee member and he was on the Board of Trustees, but I feel like the timing of some of the information that got put out to the community, mainly being within the last four days, his opinion piece, and very much respect what he has to say, ran in the news record, it hit Patch, it hit the alternative press, it hit neighborhood e-loops, and as I read it, I quickly realized that some things I thought were misleading, but it was the absence of information that concerned me a little bit more. My dad told me, I was on the speech and debate team in high school, he was like, "It's not somebody else, your opponent's job to make your arguments for you." And I was like, "Yeah, well, that's a good point." So I wanted to take the time tonight to really kind of go through everything and make sure everybody understands what we're voting on, and hopefully, we can move forward as a board. If not, we can table it, we can discuss it more, but ultimately, for the press and for my neighbors, I'm going to commit myself, at least for the next 48 hours, to giving a full version of what this charter review process was. It's very important to this village, and I want everybody to feel educated with facts. And if you disagree with us, that's fine. a full version of what this charter review process was. It's very important to this village, and I want everybody to feel educated with facts. And if you disagree with us, that's fine. There's very seldom things where we're going to agree 100% of the time, but I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So first thing is, for anybody who wants the full version of all the papers that are in front of me right now, please go to southorange.org/chartersreview. It's going to document, at least from the very beginning of establishing the Charter Review Committee, from 2009, through our public presentations, through all the votes of the committee, the committee had nine members on it, residents, including elected officials. We also had village council Steve Rother, and former village clerk Robin Klein serve with us, and former village president Doug Newman did a great job of leading the process.
And former village council as well.
Yes, that's correct. So that's kind of the long version, and you can watch the public forums, the meetings, everything's there if you really want to dive in and see the work that we did. So on to the compensation issue, because I got to tell you, I feel a little bad, because you almost kind of go through this process thinking, like, these politicians want to pay themselves, and that wasn't the intention at all. And quite frankly, when we talked to people from the 2004 Charter Review Committee that recommended stipends, first beginning at $4,000 for the village president, and then $3,500 for the trustees, they cautioned us, they're like, "The complicated thing with this issue is it can very quickly become political. You get those political soundbites, if you're going to pay yourself, it's going to be pension, you know, you're trying to make money on the backs of taxpayers." And I can honestly promise you, that was never the intention. The question that we looked at is, what do you consider fair for the members of this board of trustees, as it relates to compensation? If you go back to 2004, and also this most recent Charter Review Committee that I served on, we tried to evaluate that when people run for the board of trustees, is there some level of incremental costs that elected officials absorb during their time of service? Now, former trustee Goldberg stated very clearly that he swears he never incurred any cost to be on this board of trustees, and I can take him at his word. Like I said, we've discussed this several times, but he was the only elected official who made that claim. Everybody else, including former village president Doug Newman, people that were there before his term, said, "You know, the cost of service is that if you're meeting with constituents, if you're doing appropriate outreach, you're grabbing a cup of coffee, you're making prints off your computer, you're traveling, you know, to different towns to learn more, et cetera, these things just add up. They're not the things that you submit on your expense or reimbursements to the village, it's just the cost of service." So then we started evaluating, do we think that's fair? Is that reasonable for volunteers at the highest level of municipal government in South Orange? Because we all volunteer. I mean, I was a volunteer for 10 years before running for the board of trustees, and I can promise you, I never thought, "Hey, I'm going to make $1,800, that works itself out to like a dollar an hour, go get them." Like, that just wasn't my intention. But when you got thoughtful people together in a room, and you started looking at the recommendations from the past, and also the testimonials of elected officials, not the ones that are just on the board right now, but the ones in the past, and you just tell, you asked them to tell you the truth of what it was like, like, serving this community, and if there was any financial outlay on their behalf, and the answer was yes, across the board it was. With the exception of one elected official, every single elected official that we spoke with that filled out our survey, I was a part of the elected official subcommittee, said that there obviously was some level of financial contribution that they made as a result of volunteering and being good at being on this board of trustees. So the recommendation in 2004 was 4,000, like I said, 4,000 for the village president, $3,500 for members of the board of trustees. I can't remember how they arrived at that number, but they basically said, "No pension, no benefits, no healthcare." It really was for the incremental cost of serving. Now, when you got to the vote at the Charter Review Committee level this past go-round in 2011, I was one of the people that voted against that amount, I supported the stipend, but I didn't support the amount, because I was trying to work out the numbers in my head, and it seemed more appropriate that for the village president, I mean, these are just the raw numbers, that $200 a month would probably cover the various things that he or she would be going to, and for the trustees, who generally have less responsibility in the day-to-day operations, would be a little bit less, 150. So that's why I voted no on the amount, because for me, it was very much about just getting it down to what those real costs are. When the village was first created, I mean, I had the pleasure of serving with David Scheckner, who just had such great history, and he could tell us everything about how it started, it was very informative, but one thing, if you go back into the history of the village, when they established the board of trustees, it didn't look like what we look like today. These were CEOs, these were very prominent people of the community, they had good jobs, we have streets named after them now, but I think that if you were to match kind of the financial background of what the board was when the town was established and the charter was established, versus what we have now, and we have a variety of different demographics and different financial backgrounds and all that, you just see the faces changing. So the committee had also discussed kind of whether or not serving on the board is cost prohibitive. One example that was specifically noted was the cost of babysitting. That was in 2004 and currently, is that we have a lot of working parents, that if you attend the number of meetings that we attend, which is normally three, four, or five days a week, maybe, maybe six or seven, there's a lot of times where you're leaving your family, and if you don't have somebody else there taking care of your children, you know, is there a cost associated with that? So as you started tallying up all these different things, that's where we arrived at the stipend, and that's kind of the truth of it. I don't know if there's anything else that I can do to convince people, whether it's good or bad, but I just don't want to see it be politicized. It's not politicians paying themselves. To Ms. Pagani's point, I remember seeing her at a public forum, and we might have disagreed on the issue, but she brought up a great suggestion, "Why not put this on the ballot?" And as I started to think about that, it is the charter, it's not my charter, it's not former trustee Goldberg's charter, it's not this board of trustees' charter, it is the community's charter. And as we make changes, is there any harm to putting these questions to the community itself? And I thought that stipend issue was going to go down, quite frankly, I'm like, "Oh, jeez, no, that's certainly not going to pass, especially in such a bad economy." But the fact that it did, even by a small percentage, led me to believe that there was a lot of thoughtful people in the community, that it wasn't about paying politicians, comparing it to congressional salaries, or, you know, trying to augment our income. It really was just people evaluating that maybe being on this board of trustees, there is going to be costs associated with serving the community that we want to serve and that we value. So it did pass on the ballot. And for me personally, when you put questions to the ballot, most referendums are non-binding anyway in the state of New Jersey, how you interpret it, I would never put a question out to the community and then not honor it. So I was thrilled that it had passed at the time, as well as the other two questions, is that this is your charter. Now, we can debate turnout and how close the margin was, but this was, in November of 2011, put to the community, and by us voting for it, and me in particular, I will be reaffirming what the community had asked that this governing body do back at that time. I was disappointed, as a resident on the Charter Review Committee, that we had spent 18 months, 22 public meetings, an email address, charterreview@southorange.org. We did all these things for a really transparent and thoughtful process, it was very fulfilling to me. So to see the past four days kind of turn into a soundbite for the residents I served with, and the elected officials I served with, and the board of trustees that I had the honor of being appointed to this committee and serving them, I thought it really did a disservice to all of, all the people involved. So like I said, if you go to southorange.org/chartersreview, watch all of it. We had the public forums, we had the meetings, we had the presentation to the board of trustees, it was all very exciting, the documentation is there. I will be supporting this tonight, I supported it over the 18 months that I was on the committee. And if you look at the exhibits specifically, we didn't just look at South Orange and do testimonials from elected officials or appointed officials, we actually went to all the surrounding towns also, and I've heard the stipend issue a lot tonight, so I want to focus on that. If you look at Maplewood, they're at close to $4,000 a year, that number has never increased over the past maybe decade or so. There's a lot of examples like that, is that, you know, we always look to our partners, Maplewood in particular, they've had great public servants on their township committee. I think they, too, understand that there are costs of being on the township committee, and we can see the best of it right there. It hasn't changed, that number's always been there. And it was one of the recommendations we made in the Charter Review Committee, is that a board of trustees couldn't just come in and all of a sudden make this like $50,000 tomorrow, is that we put the number in the actual charter, so that it would make it hard for anybody to change it very quickly, is that you would still need to establish a committee, it would likely be a public process, anytime you touch the charter, it is. So we wanted to tighten that up, because I can understand the fear that some might have about it spiraling out of control. So that is the proposal, and as it relates to all of us, we determined at the last meeting, and it was the recommendation from the Charter Review Committee, too, that nobody sitting on this board right now during this current term will be receiving any sort of stipend. For those who ran in 2011, a stipend wouldn't take effect until the expiration of their current term, making it 2015. For myself, trustee Clark, and trustee Schnall, there's no stipend until the expiration of our term as well, which would make that 2017. So this isn't for us, this isn't, I can't say it enough, this isn't paying politicians trying to be anti-public servants to this community, this is for those who are supporting it, I believe, doing what we felt was right by any one of the people who would serve on this board of trustees. So I appreciate you guys indulging me for 45 minutes, but that is my version of Charter Review. And if you want to talk to me offline, that's column@southorange.org. My cellphone number, 201-704-0484, I kid you not, this is important to me, call me, meet with me, I will be putting statements in all the media that I can get my hands on. And I hope this is a process that people pay attention to moving forward. I encourage you to volunteer for the Charter Review Committee next time around, because it really was a humbling experience. I appreciate all the people who served with me, and the public, this board of trustees, and I encourage my colleagues to support this ordinance tonight and move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Did I convince somebody? I heard that.
You should have put the three-minute clock on, for sure. And I was on, I was on the Charter Review Committee with Sheena, and if I can remember right, I think the four residents voted yes, and the three elected officials voted no on that change back then?
No.
No?
No, that's not correct. The vote passed 4-2, and village president Newman supported it, I believe, did you support it?
I don't remember.
Yeah, and then the residents, and normally, the case is, is that the residents on the committee always are the ones to support it.
But anyways, as I discussed with you the other day, and I said, my feeling was that we didn't discuss the form of government enough at the Charter Review Committee, and I actually think that, as you pointed out, many things have changed over the past 50 years, 75 years, from the original charter to now, how the government works, what's expected of government to do. This used to be nothing more than a policymaking board, there were very few committee meetings, things have changed a lot, and the, I'm not sure that it works best under this form of government, especially after, you know, from past meetings at the league municipalities, or talking to officials from other town, I met with a couple of officials from Marlborough one year, one from Montclair, I've spoken with people from Maplewood, and I actually think we need to rethink that, and I would actually think we should go, keep the same Charter Review Committee possible, or make some couple of changes, and go back to them to reevaluate the form of government, which I know means delaying this again, but I just, I feel it's like a really big issue, and I think that things have changed so much from the way we operate, and the way we do meetings, and the way we do budgets today, even versus just 20 years ago, or even since I first started on the board, which is almost 20 years ago, that we really should be rethinking all this, and looking at going, not only because of the past, but also where we're going in the future with how the trustees are going to operate. And now, and this board particularly, we have a much more active and a much more participatory board than was there 30 or 40 years ago, when those, some of those trustees, and some of them I actually spoke to, literally went to two meetings a month and nothing else. If there was a committee meeting, the other did it just before the night, or it was done pretty much strictly in a phone call, or once every four or five months, it was not the meetings we have now, and I average two and a half meetings per week, and I look at the way we operate, and I feel that we're much more of a board that not only makes policy, that many of us are involved in operations to a level that our form of government is not supposed to be, we're not even supposed to be doing some of the operational things that many of us do, and I think everyone on this board has done to some degree or not, and that's what makes me think about it, and I sense from, not only from the emails about the stipends, but other emails that we get, that there's an expectation from the public for us to do more, which is, quote, "Contradicts, you know, not getting paid a stipend, asking you to do more." But if you're going to do more, and you're going to ask for stipends or pay, then you actually should be looking at the form of government, so that's my feeling. And it's not that I'm against stipends, I think that, as you pointed out very well, there is a cost to doing it. Anyone who says there isn't a cost is not really thinking it through, whether it's the coffees or the meetings with people, or, you know, I've been to Trenton a few times to meet with the governor's office, or I've been to West Orange to meet with legislators, or making trips where we actually, we had the firehouse arbitration, taking two days off of work for that, at an office in Roseland, or wherever it was, and, you know, so there's things that we're asked to do, that do cost us money, and do cost us the time, and of course, what we volunteer for, but out-of-pocket expenses, it's very hard to put in for reimbursement. Before, when we passed the reimbursement policy last month, we used to put in, I put in reimbursement once for a trip that I made down to Trenton, for the mileage, and the CFO says to me, "We don't have a policy on how we reimburse trustees." So you can put in all the requests you want, but until the board passes a policy, you're not getting reimbursed a penny, which is always, which is always a problem, because that reimbursement policy can change with every new board. So if you don't have the stipend, if you get a stipend, I would say you do away with the reimbursement policy, or vice versa, but I think it was very unfair to many of us who put in for reimbursements, and were not able to get paid on those reimbursements for trips to Trenton. And I'm not talking about the trip to the league of municipalities in Atlantic City, which for the most part became a wash, because most of us took the class that allowed the deductible and the premium to be reduced on our JIF insurance policies, if you sat through the hour and a half, you got a credit for it, which more than covered the night, one night in the hotel. But anyway, that's my feeling, is I would like to, I personally would like to see us go back to the Charter Review and really have this discussion, whether it's law of us or not, because I really think we really need to rethink government. And I think trustee Bauer made the point very well at our meetings then, and said that was the reason why she voted against, and I think about it more and more, and I think she was right, that we really need to look at, and I think there's like 600 variations of the Faulkner Act and other ones, and I do prefer to keep the name trustee and village and village president, too. So, that's my feeling on it.
Does that mean you're not going to be supporting the... Mark, there's only so many decades that can go by before we actually send something to Trenton. We do need to update the charter in some form.
It's better to get it, Mike.
What is the required time period we have to wrap it up?
Well, there really is no time period. What's going to happen is, on second reading, there's going to be a search for a sponsor in the Assembly and the Senate. It's going to get reviewed for a legal form by OLS, and there's going to be some negotiation, I'm sure, between OLS and this body in terms of tweaking it. It'll be submitted then to a committee in each of the houses, and then it'll be voted on, and at such time as both houses vote on the same version of the bill, and this charter is a bill, at that point in time, it becomes the new charter.
And at that point in time, we'll have to start the, well, probably not even start the Charter Review process again.
Well, yeah, it could take, it could take years for this to happen, sure. This stipend provision, if it survives in the ultimate legislation, won't be back here implemented probably for years.
And it depends how much we lobby for it, though, Steve.
Oh, that's true.
If we just turn it over to the legislature like they did in 2004, it can drag, if we have people who are advocating to move it along faster.
Yep, you're absolutely right, absolutely right.
Trustee Rosner, back to you, what form of government do you want to do?
I don't, I don't know, and as I said, there's, I know, I know there was, when we got a chart from village attorney, which would be the new name we reduced from, there was hundreds of forms and variations.
They are, but most are partisan forms of government.
Excuse me, I know, and the non, I would stay with the non- Excuse me, I know, and the non, I would stay with the nonpartisan form, and I would, but I would probably look more to a, I think you were the one who raised, you know, pointed out that we're probably more like a city manager type of government, but I've sourced some other variations that I was looking at, and I don't want to give anyone any preconceived notions of what we should, but I would like to keep an open mind about it, but...
But I thought we evaluated that, from our own committee's reports.
I didn't think we spent, I'll put it this way, I personally didn't feel like we evaluated enough, or gave it much thought, I think we all felt the charter's working, let's just tweak it.
But nobody had complaints about how the board operated.
I don't disagree with that, I think, you know, and I don't disagree with that. My rethinking of it is that I think we should have discussed it more, and I should have spoken up more.
I think one of the points to make tonight, perhaps trustee Rosner, is that you can, you could support this tonight, and we could form a new Charter Review Commission tomorrow.
That's true, we could.
So if you want to rethink government, which I think is a great idea, we can do that, and that doesn't exclude you from supporting this tonight. I would echo a lot of the sentiments that trustee Column made. I think one of the things for me, my personal beliefs about government, and we've discussed this here a couple of times, but I feel very strongly in favor of the stipends. And like trustee Column said, it's not about paying politicians or anything like that, and I'm not sure, I mean, it's maybe a separate discussion, why politicians shouldn't get paid right off the bat. And as a person who spends a lot of time volunteering, I probably spend about, on an average week, 50 or 60 hours a week volunteering with the village, between my responsibilities as village president, my responsibilities as the OEM coordinator, and my service in the rescue squad, and before that, the library board, and the Citizens Public Safety Committee, and the Community Emergency Response Team. So, you know, volunteering is something that is very, very, very important to me, and I think is a very important piece of a fabric of your community, to have opportunities and places for people to get involved and volunteer. However, I think that there's also an incredibly important philosophical belief that is ingrained in our democracy in this country, which is that the voting process and holding office is supposed to be open to anybody. The requirements for holding office for village president is you have to be a US citizen, and you have to be of voting age, and that's it. There's no school, there's no degrees, there's no qualifications, you've got to be of legal age to be an adult.
That was close for you, huh?
It was very close. And someone argued legally, I may have made it, but not otherwise. And so that extremely, extremely, extremely low barrier of entry legally, from a constitutional perspective, is meant to allow any citizen that wants to be part of the body that makes decisions about how to tax people, that makes decisions about how to police its own citizens, that anybody is allowed to do that. And I do believe very strongly that not paying elected officials goes totally in the face of all of that. There are definitely many incidental expenses that trustee Column spoke about that you incur as an elected official, and there are, you know, sort of government expenses that you can put in a reimbursement for, but getting coffee with a resident is not one of those. I would never think to put in a reimbursement form, because I went to Starbucks with somebody to meet for a meeting, but that still should happen, and we should all do that, and there's a million other things that come up on a regular basis. The biggest of which one is if you're a single parent and you want to do this job, I can say I spend, you know, easily, on an average week, 30 or 40 hours as village president, and if I had the time, I would spend much more. If you have, if you're a single parent and you have a kid at home, how are you supposed to do that? I don't recall a village president ever being a single parent in the history of this town, and I'm not sure if there's been any trustees in that same vote.
You did have one, you had Bill.
Bill was.
Yeah, Bill was, yeah, and there is, there is an incredible, incredible barrier to people who don't have the income that many are fortunate to have. We have a former trustee who's very happy, living up on the hill, in a nice house, and, you know, perhaps doesn't understand that not everybody is not in that same income bracket, and there are people who cannot afford to do those things, and that should never be a thought in someone's mind when they're thinking about running for elected office in this country at any level. They should never have to think about, can I afford to be a public servant? That doesn't make any sense at all. So providing that stipend is a small token to those people who may not have the means to be able to do that themselves, and if that allows one person who wouldn't have otherwise run for office to be a public servant, I would consider that successful. You know, the comparison to other governing bodies and Congress is totally crazy, I mean, they're getting almost $200,000 a year, plus lots of benefits. We're talking about what comes out to well under a dollar an hour, depending on how much time someone spends, you know, so I don't think you would ever, ever, and it's a little, it's almost a little, it's funny, we had the same argument on my student government in college about stipends, where there was folks that were very opposed to stipends existing, there were folks that said, you know, we're spending, you know, 20 hours a week doing this, and there are expenses, and the idea that you would ever get someone who would run for office because of the money, I don't think you would ever, ever, ever see someone run for office, and they're doing it for the paycheck. There are plenty of easier, you could panhandle out on, down by Sloan Street, and you could earn a lot more, if you wanted to, than taking that stipend. So I don't think that any of the people up here, I don't think that anyone who's ever considered supporting this has ever been selfishly motivated by wanting the money themselves, and I think that goes especially considering the fact that we've all said that none of us will get it, and it's really for the people who come next. And I believe so, so strongly in that fundamental principle of government, that anybody who wants to be a public servant should be allowed to do that, and their effectiveness at their job shouldn't be hampered by the fact that they may not earn a high income. And if we think about government at a larger level, at a state level, at a federal level, beyond that, I think you find that a lot of citizens are very unhappy with the kind of things that government does. Very few people approve of what Congress is doing, and if you think about the pathway for someone to get to that point, maybe local government for some folks would be a starting point, but if they can't do it, because they can't afford to join their town council, because they can't afford to hire a babysitter to watch their kid, you may not ever see that person get to a higher level of government. So when you look at the kind of net that we cast in this country, in this society, of how we find good public servants, I think there are a lot of people who would agree that we don't find enough good ones. And if we cast that net a tiny bit wider, and we can break down a little bit of a class barrier in doing that, and say, you know what, if you don't have a great income, that's okay, you're still welcome to be part of this, and you don't have to worry, because you're going to get some of these incidental expenses covered, and we have a reimbursement policy that will pay you back for government expenses, for official government expenses. So I feel very strongly that this is a great thing to do, and is very, very important from a philosophical perspective about having a democratic government, and even though the, every single expense, we think about what the impact in the budget is going to be, when you talk about, you know, the impact of this, the $2 or $3 a homeowner, that at the end of the day, is that worth it to allow anybody to run for office in this town without worrying about class, or income, or socioeconomic issues? And most of the folks that I've talked to in town do think that, and most of the people who went to the polls do think that, and the fact that in 2012, we put a public question on the ballot...
2011.
2011, asking for elected officials to get money, and it got above 50, the fact that it got above 10% is incredible. I mean, imagine what would happen if people put that on the ballot about state legislators or about Congress, and I think that goes to show that A, we have a community that believes that the people who are doing this job are committed to it for the right reasons, and that future people will be committed to it for the right reasons, and B, of an incredible understanding in the town that I'm proud to call my hometown, that this is a place that values people and can have some sort of empathy for folks that maybe have a different situation than you do, and people have an understanding that there are, that not everybody can afford everything, and that's one of the things that I love about this town, and I think that's one of the underlying tenants of those stipends. And I guess, you know, maybe just a quick note on the titles as well, just something else I do support, you know, I think that historically, and I think it's all, you know, clear to some degree, to a large degree, considering how much money we're spending on fixing Village Hall, that we are all very interested in preserving as much history in this town as we can, and even going back to the name Village, South Orange Village for our name of our town is a big step, back to something that I think we all agree, or 70% plus people who live in town agreed, that we should have. But 50 years ago, or 100 years ago, the way that our government worked was very different, and not just some of the things that trustee Rosner talked about, but it was very insular, and our lives as elected officials is anything but that today. We spend almost as much time talking to people outside of town as talking to people inside of town, and I know I go and meet with other elected officials in other towns, the local level, county level, state level, federal level, all the time, meet with private companies that we want to do business with, like Zipcar, we meet with grant-writing agencies, we do conferences, we do workshops, we do panels, we talk to people about what we're doing, and we learn from other people about better ways to do things, and every time you introduce one of us, and you have to give an explanation of who we are, and people think that we serve on the advisory board for a college, because the named trustee, nobody associates with being a municipal legislative member, and village president, people often have no idea what that possibly means. Student government president, I'm not sure. And that lack of understanding is actually something very serious, because it is our weight and our credibility to do good policy for this town. So when we go out and we talk about what we're doing, and someone is reacting to trustees and village president, they don't know what that is, and it's like, oh, it's this funny little village with these funny little names, you know, it's not really that much important happening there. That is the reaction that I, that I can see on people's faces when I go outside of South Orange, is they write South Orange off as a place that's not important, because they don't understand the titles, and maybe everybody should be a little more educated to understand those things, but maybe we should also understand that we live in a very interconnected, in a very global society, and mayor and council is something that everybody understands. Everybody understands mayor is the chief executive officer of the government, everybody understands council member is a legislative branch. With our fire department, one of the things that we've done, and across the country, emergency services do this, is we're realigning all the titles to meet standards that everybody uses. So for example, we used to have captains in our fire department, we now have deputy chiefs, because that's what everybody else uses. So when that person goes to a scene in another town, and they say, "I'm a deputy chief," that person knows exactly who they are, and there's not a moment's hesitation about what that person's role in this incident or in this activity will be. And I think that's just an example of how more and more people are trying to get standardized so that we can work together more, because so much of our work is beyond our borders, and if we can go out and bring resources back into South Orange, that's an amazing thing, and if that titles allow us to be able to do that better, and it doesn't cost anybody any money, you know, that's a great thing to be able to support and be a part of. Are there...
We can go all night, can't we?
We can go there all night, but I would, I would, and seeing how I think the vote's going to go, I would like to make a motion to table at the next meeting, when you have your full six people here, the full six people here, to have the vote go with the way I think the majority is going to go, and otherwise it won't pass, and that's, you know, I would give you that opportunity to do that, if you're more comfortable with that.
Well, I don't, let's discuss. Okay, so I'm fine with tabling, I don't care, I just don't know if it's going to change the outcome. So what I'd rather do is understand your concerns, or perhaps trustee Levison's concerns, because I watched this go down in 2012, where all the work was done, and everybody had one thing within this entire document they didn't like, and so you watched an entire Charter Review process fail. So if there's a way to avoid that, and perhaps chat...
I would like to have the discussion about the form of government without going through this, and I think that, this stipend issue, I don't, I think it's more, I'm not quite sure what to call it, I don't think it's, I know it's very big to some people, but I think it's really the small, a small issue.
Oh, I think it's pretty small, too.
And I understand some people's concerns about it being, getting out of hand, but because it's in the charter, it's, as we can see, it's a very difficult process to change, and it's very unlikely to change for another 20 years, even though you can review the charter every 12 years, or whatever the number is, but I think that the form of government is really, and I don't, and I understand the Charter Review Committee, and we did discuss it at that first meeting, I just don't think that we really thought it through, and I personally didn't, and I think that we should have that discussion to a much greater length, and I don't think, obviously, tonight's form is not the right way to do it, and I think we should invite in some former elected officials, and maybe even the members who were on the Charter Review Committee, and I would like to have that discussion. So that's my personal feeling about it, I don't know, trustee, I haven't sent some checks.
I have total respect for that, you know, Mark, I value your service. I have no interest in looking at our form of government. I feel like we have really important issues right now that we need to be tackling. I don't want another committee, I don't want another review, I feel like we've kicked this can down the road, and we keep kicking it, soon we're just going to fall, like, let's do something with this Charter Review. Vote it down if you must, but at least at the bare minimum, let's get our charter up to date. I mean, it's antiquated, we are superseded by state law on several of these items. It's like, we can't just keep, like, blowing the dust off the document, not doing something with it. Too many people keep putting in time into this thing, we call a Charter Review, only to it to get to this level, and then watch it fail, and then appoint another committee to redo it again. It's like Groundhog Day. So I'd rather make a decision, I feel like every committee, every trustee has pretty big things on their plate right now. For some of the residents who said, "Why are you even dealing with this?" We weren't, the process was already there, the committee already did all the work, we have everything, we have stacks this big. For us, it wasn't a matter of, like, revisiting what was done two years ago, that revisited what was done eight years before that. It was like, okay, now we finally have a board that wants to move something forward, let's move it forward. Zero interest on my part, don't want to look at the form of government, I think we are just happy as can be right now. I'd rather get back to the important issues of the village, give it the time that it's due tonight, we've had a lot of people come out tonight, and I'm ready to, like, grip and rip, move it along.
It's up to you, I mean, I told you we'd have plans.
If it's up to me, I move the ordinance.
Well, before you do that, before you do that, we have to have our public hearing. So even though we did hear many comments before about this ordinance, now would also be a time, if you want to speak just about this ordinance, if anybody wishes to speak, please feel free to do so.
Isn't there a motion on the floor to table?
No, no.
No.
We're going to do public hearing.
Just state your name and address for the record, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
Robert Chandros, 108 West Montrose Avenue. I did not come here tonight to talk about this. I am terribly offended, trustee Column, at your efforts to do a hatchet job on former trustee Goldberg. They were out of place, ill-advised, and to me, downright insulting to him. Secondly, if you're so gung-ho on going down to Trenton to lobby for something, why don't you go down there and lobby for the Board of Public Utilities to get public service to enact a fair tariff so that we could install new gaslight heads that will save us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year? In the 42 years I've lived here, I've never heard one person say, "I can't run for government because I can't afford it." And bear in mind, all of you, that when this thing came up for a vote, like another certain issue that came up for a vote, it passed by about six votes. There was hardly an overwhelming show of support on the part of residents in this town for this proposal. As far as the amounts involved, when you look at it, it is taxable income, if you assume anybody running is going to be filing a joint tax return, they're going to end up with probably a little over $100 a month. Given the fact that I think these days, the going rate for babysitters is $10 an hour, they're not going to get a lot of babysitting paid for out of this. So I think you're deluding yourself, and you're deluding the public by saying, "Well, if we do this, we get all these single parents to pay for babysitters and come out and volunteer 30 or 40 hours a week to do things." That just is not going to happen. And you delude yourself, and you delude the public if you think otherwise. It's about time you faced reality, if you're going to throw things out there, then at least be honest about it, and don't shove them under the table. And if you don't believe that these things should happen, then state publicly that, should you run for reelection, you will not accept a stipend.
If I run for reelection, I will not accept the stipend.
Well, fine, there are five other people up there, I'd like to hear each one of them, and the village president.
They don't want to do that.
Hold on, hold on.
They don't have to do that.
You can finish your comments.
No, I want to hear you say that, to prove that it's nothing self-centered. As I said, if you really want to do something for this town, do something that matters. Go down to Trenton, lobby for the Board of Public Utilities to do something about enacting a tariff so we can install modern gaslight heads and save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. That's far more important economically, to me, as a taxpayer, than a lot of this other crap is concerned.
Thirty seconds.
As far as other things are concerned, I have no problem with reimbursement, I have no problem with a very liberally defined reimbursement policy. That is not what stipends are about. Either we have a citizen-volunteer government, or we don't. And quite frankly, after living here for 42 years, I'm all in favor of a citizen-volunteer government. I don't think we need to change that, I don't think we need to invent titles, one of which is already being used by a member of the board up there, and he knows what I'm referring to. So let's cut out the malarkey, and let's be honest.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yep, just come on up, and name and address into the microphone, please.
My name is Thurman McCoy, and I live at 68 Glenview Road. I would like to applaud you folks for what you do, I appreciate it, I know it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of energy, and everything that Sheena said, and everything that Alex said, I totally agree with. I can't believe what I'm hearing from the audience, however, and when we look at what's going on here, I don't think there's a person in this room that agrees with, excuse me, what's going on in Congress today. Everybody in here was saying that Congress is doing such a bad job... Everybody in here was saying that Congress is doing such a bad job, but yet, we take a small town like South Orange, and we can't put an issue like this behind us. I think that's pretty disturbing, so I applaud you guys, now, thank you.
Thanks, Thurman.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Leonard, I live at 147 Brentwood Drive. I am very offended tonight, the running on between our president and our trustee, running their policies, talking about lobbying, whining about this need for this stipend, is ludicrous. If you can't afford a babysitter, don't volunteer. If you volunteer, I, all of us have volunteered, and we use our own money when we volunteer, we don't expect to be reimbursed, but reimbursements are fine, for gas, for whatever it is. I agree with trustee Rosner, who has been amazing through the years, and steadfast. This should be tabled, this should be re-investigated. You, I'm afraid, Ms. Cullen, that you don't want to, every time he says, let's talk about it, let's think about it, you go, you sound like an angry wife, actually. I mean, you keep coming back and coming back, I think a lot of people in this town did not know what was going on with this charter. I mean, I actually voted for it, I am so sorry I did, because now I've finally gotten from Mr. Goldberg some information about this, and I was appalled, as were all my neighbors. So I think that it'd be a very, very good idea to step back, think this over, and let the rest of the citizens become a little more involved in your decision. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, Bob Adler, 120 Rolston Avenue, South Orange. The issue of the pensions on the stipend, not the last time this came up, but the time before that it came up, was not that you were gonna get a pension for South Orange, not you, the board, but that the time served as a paid municipal employee would be credited towards the time one needed to get a state pension, if one had a state or other municipal job, and, I mean, that's how it came out at that time. I don't know if it's true, but somebody who had 18 years, for example, in a state job, and needed two more years, if they were a paid municipal employee, had those two years added. I don't know if it's true, I think you are, you've all donated your time, Mr. Levison and Mr. Rosner, for so long, and that's what it should be, it should be donated time, you should get reimbursed. As I donate my time, not as much as you do yours, on the Board of Adjustment, and as I do printing out of my printer, and gas out of my car, and time reviewing law, and reviewing resolutions, and reviewing minutes and plans, I volunteer as you do, and I expect that I will stay as a volunteer, unpaid, as I believe you should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there are no more members of the public who wish to comment, I'd like to close public comments. Mr. Rother, did you wanna just weigh in on the pension issue at all?
Yeah, yeah, the stipends will not contribute towards pension credits, we researched that, and that's absolutely not the fact.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, I am not in favor of the way it's constructed right now. There are parts of the charter review, which I do agree with, which are the statutory changes that need to be made, within our...
Speak into the mic.
Within our charter. I think those things are valid, and I would like to see them separated as something that we could bring down to Trenton and have voted on. I do not believe in the stipend, I think they can be abused or misused. Specifically, I have had conversations with council people in other municipalities, and they use that money so that they can support political campaigns of, and going to various campaign parties, which they couldn't do out of their own pockets. I don't, I think it's a backdoor in being able to support political campaigns, it is the village who ultimately will end up paying for those types of things, not only political, but as well as nonprofit. I don't think the village should be supporting those types of activities. That's what I hear very strong from the council people that I speak to, for the usage of those stipends. And I have difficulty in that, and given that we have a reimbursement policy, I think that satisfies a number of the questions that we have raised about compensating people for money coming out of their pocket, for supporting them in the business that they do in government. And I do agree with Mark about looking at the form of government. Even in the past four years, we have changed significantly in the kinds of things that we're doing here in South Orange. And I think the form of government really needs to be addressed, and how we are structured, and how we can respond to that need. I think, to the extent of consolidation between municipalities, such as shared services, that has really come to the forefront, we act differently than we have done in the past. And I cannot support the way it is right now.
Any other comments or questions?
So you wanna go back to the one that we established in 2011, and ask those people if they want to relook at the entire form of government?
Yes.
Why don't we do that after, if your question is about the form of government, why would that preclude you from voting on this tonight? Why don't you do one, and then do the other? They're not mutually exclusive in any way.
They are mutually exclusive, in the sense in how long it takes to get these things passed and done, and then to go back to the legislator, to get another sponsor for a bill or an amendment to the sponsor, it's easier to do it once. And to delay it, to delay it potentially a month or two, to get it right, in my mind, is not a big deal, and it's our time, on a committee time, it won't be taken away from village meeting, that's the way I feel about it.
You're suggesting it will take a month or two, even though it took us three years to review this charter review.
It didn't take me three years, it took you three years, maybe.
No, it did take you three years.
Took me one night.
It took you three years, actually, trustee Rosner, because even though we presented these findings in 2011, you just said you changed your mind about doing this a few days ago, so it actually did take you three years.
You should've voted on it a year ago.
So what I'm saying is that, what it sounds like you wanna do, and I wholeheartedly support trustee Cullen, this is totally crazy to think to delay this again. We spend so much time sitting up here, talking, and we spend so little time actually doing anything, and to kick this down the road, because you don't wanna make a decision tonight, is really upsetting. Because a lot of people put a lot of time into doing this, including yourself, and now, for some reason, the past week or two, you've changed your mind about it all, but to think that, you think that if a year was spent on that review, and two and a half years is spent by this governing body reviewing this, that you can reevaluate the entire form of government that this municipality has in a month? I'm sorry, but I cannot in any way see that happening. So if you'd like to go ahead and do that, that's a great thing to do, and I will sit on that committee with you, and reevaluate forms of government, because I love doing that, but I also think that we should take the recommendations that so many people put so much time into making, and act on them tonight. We've had dozens of public meetings, we've had tons of information, documentation, videos on the website, we have a former trustee spreading an enormous amount of misinformation, but there's a lot of information about this process on the website, excuse me, on the website, and available to the public. So I think that if there's anybody who has questions, I know, I've talked to dozens of residents that have had questions about this, and explained to them the entire process, given them the charter review recommendations, they can go read everything themselves. We've got all the information, we've had all the meetings, it's time to act.
Well, at a bare minimum, what I wanna make sure that we do, is pull out the items where we have consensus, I just don't want it to drop again. Mark, we served on this committee together, I mean, that was a lot of time we spent on it, and I just don't wanna see the whole thing go down in flames again.
I understand that.
So what can we get now to move forward, and if we have to split out some other votes, just to move something forward, like what? I'm ready to move the whole thing forward, but if we don't have the support for that, or if we have some individual members who want to pull certain items out...
Trustee Rosner and trustee Levison that are not interested in moving this forward tonight, maybe trustee Clark and trustee Schnell want to weigh in?
I didn't say that, wait, 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 I said, if you split it apart, I would agree with the statutory components of it.
Okay. Sorry? Don't you need four? Right.
It doesn't go to you, there's no vote, you don't vote unless there's a tie.
That's incorrect.
Is it?
Yes.
I was gonna suggest that we just...
I'm asking Steve Rother.
No.
The village president can break a tie on resolutions, and can be the fourth vote on ordinances.
The village president can be the fourth necessary vote to pass an ordinance.
Okay, you're right.
I was gonna suggest that, given that probably 90% of it is things like the gender differences that are out of date, why don't we pull out the two things that seem to be an issue? One, Mark, reevaluating the form of government, there's no way that takes a month. So let's pull that out, if you wanna pull that out, or let's leave it the way it is, and submit what we can, if we wanna pull the stipend issue out, and revisit that, fine, but let's pass the 90% of it that we can, and the 90% of it which is functional, just to have a functional document, because it's gonna take years for it to get into place anyway. And, you know, if you wanna spend the time to reevaluate the form of government, fine, we'll have that, there's a reason why there's a charter review process, but...
So you're pulling out the stipends, and what else?
Titles.
And what?
To vote on separately tonight?
No, no, he's saying, we have to, we'd have to start again anyway, then. Right, we have to go to first reading again.
So why don't, why doesn't someone just make a motion for passing this, and see if it passes?
Well, we can make a motion to table it, too.
Do whatever you want.
I'm thinking. Okay, now, we can figure it out in real time. So you will be voting, Mark, against the changing titles and the stipends, everything else you're good with, moving forward, or do you wanna just not move anything forward?
Yeah, we can do that. Pull out those two, and we're voting out tonight, and then we'll agree to vote to discuss the form of government going forward.
Okay, and Howard, are you in the same place?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we've got two...
Before we continue, let me ask a question of Mr. Rother. If we take pieces out and vote on them separately, even if they, if they don't, if you get, let's say you get unanimous voting on all the other parts of it, and you get a majority vote on the other two, on the stipends and titles that we take out, the thing that you send to the legislature is still the same, as if it was all together, right? Because it's whatever the governing body approves.
Yeah, and I think, right now, you have to understand the ordinance that you're voting on, and that you had a first reading on, is the entire document.
We have to go back to first reading.
We would have to, we would have to go back and have a first reading on an amended document. In essence, what you would be doing right now is polling the board to see what features could pass, and then we would incorporate those features in a new draft charter, which would get a first and second reading anew. But I think the only vote you can take right now is on the document as it was passed on first reading.
Your mic.
You've gotta, you've gotta take the document as you passed it on first reading.
Did trustee Deborah Davis Ford vote on, did she support this on first reading, the ordinance in its totality?
I believe so.
Did she raise any, did she raise any issues?
Trustee Levison was the only one who voted no.
You were the only one, okay. My Roberts rules, I was wearing the little thing.
All right, then I move to table the ordinance.
Okay, a motion by trustee Levison to table the ordinance, seconded by trustee Rosner. Why don't we take a roll on this table?
Roll call. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
No.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
You have four A's, one A, one absent.
So can we go over, though, the next, like, stage? So we have a tabled ordinance now, what do we want prepared for the next meeting, between now and then?
We can create another ordinance, or a pair of ordinances that address the majority of the issues that we agree upon, and the other one, the other pieces.
So you want Steve to prepare, we already have one, that's gonna be tabled, and then the next ordinance being prepared is gonna incorporate everything, except the titles and the stipends, is that correct?
Yes.
It may be two additional individual ones, or you can combine, or you can combine the two of those issues into another ordinance.
Correct.
You have one with all the, I think, one that there's consensus on.
So it's like option A or B.
And then either stipends, you could have three ordinances, one's just stipends, and one's the names, or you could merge those two together if there was a sense.
Okay, is that fine with you?
Chinese menu.
Nice, yeah, no, you're correct. Does that work for the two of you, so we can move something forward at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna have one from column A, and one from column B.
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Was the sense that the stipends and the name changes, the rise or fall together, and they can be combined into one?
I think they'll, can we combine those two, or do you want them broken out?
No.
The stipends and the titles.
You can combine them, from my perspective.
Okay, they're okay combining them.
It's okay, so we have stipends and name changes, as a separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that mean you have to prepare another clean version of the charter?
That's easy, that's very easy.
So wait, so we're gonna have two potential ordinances, one without the title changes and without the stipends, and one with?
Yeah, one as is, as is.
One is as is, one is tabled. You just have to open it up again. Right. And one is without the two things.
The existing, we're gonna do the existing ordinance as it now appears, and a second version without the stipends and the name changes. So you're gonna have two choices for our first reading.
Okay. Even though we would have accomplished the same goal by just voting on the ordinance tonight, it's good. Let's move on.
So, well, I need another clarification to the village president, so we're gonna have something on, we've already passed something on first reading, so we need another...
First reading, yeah, this is surviving, this is surviving.
We have one that's tabled on first reading, the next one that we introduce at the regular meeting will be a first reading for that document.
Exactly. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have a second document, you're gonna have this same document which survives, because it's been tabled.
So what if you have both ordinances on for second reading, and you pass the first one, and then you pass the second one?
Well, obviously, you won't have enough votes to pass both.
But I'm saying, just from a procedural standpoint, if you have two things with the same law, on different parts of the agenda, I mean, what if, what if the governing body passes both?
I can't imagine you're gonna have enough votes to pass both.
I'm just asking from a legal perspective.
Probably the simplest way would be to have this one, it's on the table, at the next meeting, put that on first, it makes it or it doesn't, if it doesn't make it, then you have the next one for introduction.
Right, that's absolutely right.
If the first one passes, then the other one's boot, you never introduce it.
Yes. Understood.
And lives another day.
Will we send it down to the legislative, and then make the decision?
They couldn't be slower than this. Why don't we move on to the next ordinance?
Ordinance 2013, ordinance 2013-21, an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 152-36, schedule four, with respect to parking on Cameron Road, Mercer Place, Milton Place, and Sinclair Street.
Thank you, this is an ordinance to change the parking regulations on a number of streets in Tuxedo Park. The intention of this ordinance was to fix some of the parking problems that came up after the whole, what's the word, kerfuffle, I think that's the legal word, when Seton Hall was parking vehicles in Tuxedo Park, and they realized that there were some parking regulations that were out of alignment with the rest of Tuxedo Park.
I think you mean Seton Hall students.
What's that?
Seton Hall students were parking there, not Seton Hall itself.
Right, the university wasn't moving into Tuxedo Park, although I could sort of argue it was. So just for the public's benefit, I'll just read the different streets here. So we have Cameron Road, this will be, basically, they're all gonna be two hours, the Cameron Road, two hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, from South Center Street to Kingman Road, Mercer Place, on both sides of the street, two hours, 8:00 to 6:00, Milton Place, both sides, two hours, 8:00 to 6:00, Sinclair, on the south side, two hours, 8:00 to 6:00. And then I believe South Center Street still has one hour parking. And so this didn't change any of the streets, and I think South Center was the only one that only had one hour parking, the 8:00 to 6:00s, Monday through Saturday, or Monday through Friday, so these are different than our parking regulations, like in the downtown, which is Monday through Saturday. So the time limit is not enforced Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, in Tuxedo Park. And this was also after getting a lot of input from the Tuxedo Park Neighborhood Association, um, that provided a little bit of feedback and guidance about what folks that live in Tuxedo Park wanted to see. So at this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance specifically? Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance specifically, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Can we open up for discussion quickly? Was this properly noticed to the folks in Tuxedo Park? They, they knew from me that it was posted for first reading and passed, but, okay. Great, perfect, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, so there is a motion from trustee Rosner.
Second.
Second from trustee Cullen, excuse me, do we have the roll, please? I'm sure I don't wanna table this.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison? Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
The board has passed ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-one on second reading.
I, I do have one, uh, Barry, do we have the signage available now?
Uh, yes. I'll confirm that, but I know once it was introduced, we, the Public Works Director made the arrangements, started ordering the additional signs, so if they're not in yet, they will be shortly.
And we're gonna give warnings for the first forty-five days like we usually do, or whatever it is?
Yeah, well, again, with, with any of them, yeah, when there are change like that, they're generally lenient with the warnings initially and...
What's your license plate? All right, so the next is, we have one, uh, resolution that was tabled.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash two forty-six, a resolution selecting option for a new rescue squad facility and authorizing a preparation of plans, the specifications consistent therewith.
Thanks, um, so this is pretty much, uh, similar status as from the last meeting, um, with a couple of updates. Um, one is, have a meeting scheduled with the, um, I don't know if it's with the full development committee, or if it's with the subcommittee that was working on this.
It's the full.
It's, I think it's the full, yeah, and, and that will be, uh, Mr. Lewis and myself, and, um, it'll be a publicly noticed meeting, so anybody who wants to join is certainly welcome to. Um, and, and part of what we're hoping to do there is, um, we've got a few different cost estimates for the building, um, and now we've gone to, um, through some different sources that Mr. Lewis and I spoke about in the last meeting, we've worked, um, looked with some contractors who have done some work with the village in the past, get them to kind of eyeball everything and give their cost estimate, and that was pretty well in line with what we were getting from, um, elsewhere. It wasn't hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference, um, enough to say, okay, so you know, there's something going wrong here. Um, so they're all, you know, pretty much in the same ballpark. Um, so what we're gonna do is take one final round, um, at the current building designs, um, with any feedback that the development committee members or anybody else who comes, um, wants to give, um, as far as ways that we can reduce the cost of the construction to the building.
Can you try and get them the document in advance?
Yeah.
So that for the meeting, they'll be prepared?
Absolutely. Um, and so we will, uh, have that conversation, um, and then what we'd like to be able to do, um, is be back before the board, um, on the twenty-third, um, and this meeting will, is next week, so it will have happened between this meeting, the meeting with the development committee is between this meeting and our next board meeting. Um, and at that point, we hope to have, um, a direction, um, that we'd like to ask the board to go in, out of the options that exist. Um, you know, this has obviously been taking a little longer than we wanted to, um, but, you know, we're getting pretty close, and, so hopefully with there, if there's any, you know, any, anything that we gain from, um, this group, that would be, you know, extremely helpful, uh, for us, and I think we're all kinda interested in that feedback, so, uh, we'll see what happens there, and we'll report back to all you guys, um, for whoever's not at that meeting, um, in our next board meeting. I don't know if there's anything you wanna add, just sort of...
No, pretty well summed it up.
Okay, um, so the, the request is to kinda leave that on the table. Next is resolutions on consent agenda.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash two eighty-seven, a resolution supporting New Jersey Senate... Let me back up. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two eighty-six, a resolution hiring seasonal staff for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen winter recreation programs in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two eighty-seven, a resolution supporting New Jersey Senate Bill S. two nine four seven, permitting municipalities to contract with the private company to provide construction officials, subcode officials, and technical assistants. Resolution twenty thirteen to eighty-eight, resolution awarding a contract to Appraisal Systems, Inc., to provide tax core defense services for state tax appeals for tax year twenty fourteen. Twenty thirteen dash two eighty-nine, a resolution awarding a contract to Garden State Appraisers and Consultants to provide tax core defense services for residential properties, appeals for tax year twenty fourteen. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two ninety, a resolution adopting correct, the corrective action plan for twenty twelve annual audit report. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two ninety-one, a resolution approving addendum to Bataglia Associates, contracting the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two ninety-two, a resolution authorizing change order number one for Revax Contracting Corp. for construction services for the project known as Road Improvements twenty thirteen, various streets, Thornon Street, Brenda Road, Kingsland Terrace, Kingsland Court, and South Ridgewood Road, representing a net decrease of three thousand, six hundred, sixty dollars and ninety cents to the original contract amount. Resolution twenty thirteen dash two ninety-three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a nine-one-one console and equipment through state contract T. dash zero one zero nine, radio communication equipment and accessories, vendor mobile Tektronix, Inc., in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you, um, uh, I just wanna make a quick comment, and, um, trustee Levison or Mr. Lewis, I'll ask you to perhaps elaborate a little bit on two ninety-one. Um, and so for some period of time, we've been interested in, um, changing our CFO services, our contract with our former administrator of CFOs expiring at the end of this year, um, who has remained on, um, as our part-time CFO, um, so it's a part-time statutory position, um, and what we are, uh, have been interested in doing, which I ask you to speak a little bit more about, is working with, um, the company Bataglia Associates that does our finance in Village Hall. Um, so they do all the payroll processing and all the other financial administrative work, um, and I think that all of us have been, um, you know, pretty thrilled with their performance over the years, um, and what they've been able to do for us, and actually, some of their processes are, you know, fairly modern and electronic compared to the way a lot of towns process, um, a lot of the financial paperwork. So we're able to actually use them as our CFO as well, so I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit more about that.
Well, it's, it's, um, increasing the scope of what they currently have. One of the pieces that we wanna put into place is a cash sharing system, which was previously written by an employee of, uh, South Orange, uh, which has been malfunctioning and actually has been written up in our order report. Uh, that's a component which they will be taking on responsibility. As part of that process, we're doing some, uh, process flow changes, which Bataglia will be responsible for doing. Um, there are additional, uh, financial, uh, structure, restructuring that we wanna do on our books and records, which we've been attempting to do for a number of years and haven't been able to do, we will now be able to do that. It will bring us into line with, uh, what the other municipalities within the state are, are currently doing, um, as well as taking on the CFO function, uh, and coordinating with, with our finance department. Do you wanna add anything more to that, Barry?
Yeah, uh, just again, I, I've been in, in my not-quite-two-years here, very pleased with Battalion Associates, uh, what they do, they do have licensed CFO on staff, um, they'll be able to provide that function, and in addition, as, as trustee Levison referred to, is, um, fill the void and, and take over the implementation training and oversight of this, um, cash sharing, receipting program that we're adding to our Muninex finance suite, which, it, it, again, we had this sort of homemade system, and it's been broken and not fixable, so, uh, and I, and I think that having the continuity of having the CFO function within the same company is really gonna be invaluable, and the, the alternative options would be to go out and get, you know, either continue, uh, in the current situation or find another part-time CFO that's full-time in another town and just sort of shows up when you could get him there. Um, I think this provides us a much more comprehensive, better accessibility, uh, and in the end, even adding in the new services, the total cost is less than the current cost when you factor in not only the salary plus the FICA, plus the pension, plus the other related employee costs, so we're, we're getting better and, and additional services on the cash sharing end for less money, so.
Well, and, and...
It's good, and it only extends it through the, the current term of this contract, which is through the end of August, so we will be having to go out for RFP again, uh, shortly, so covers that window.
Yes, and, and as well as, uh, he is a certified registered CFO, tenured in, well, I don't know if he's tenured, he, uh, as well as cert, um, certified, uh, within another township within, uh, is Glen Ridge or? Yeah. Caldwell, okay.
Just wanted to, I, I got one email from one of the residents, I think the question probably comes from a lot of people about the oversight when you have the CFO and the treasurer the same, which evidently is not unusual for a lot of towns to do, and I just wanna point out that we still have an independent auditor who oversees the, uh, books, whose name won't be Bataglia, and, uh, our village administrator, of course, also oversees the operations of the finance and, and checks on anything of, of all that along with the bills list that we have to review. So there is a check and balance, it's not as if there's, if we've eliminated the process by having that. It's fairly common to do it this way, of an auditor and the administrator overseeing what the CFO slash treasurer finance department does.
By the way, that's another one of the charter changes, uh, we are eliminating the title of treasurer?
We are, that's, that's one of the eliminate, that's being eliminated from the charter, that's one of the positions.
Statutory changes, it doesn't really exist, it was replaced.
One of the proposed ones.
But everyone agrees with it.
Um, any other comments or questions on any of the consent agenda resolutions?
I would just like, uh, the village administrator to explain two eighty-eight and two eighty-nine, just why there's two different, uh, resolutions for the tax appeals.
Uh, we actually utilize two different companies for the residential appeals and the commercial appeals, so one company, they specialize in the residential tax appeals, and the other specializes in the commercial tax appeals. So there, it's actually two different companies.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk to two ninety-three?
Pardon me?
Two ninety-three?
Uh, I, I can speak to it, or do you wanna speak to it, or?
Okay.
Yeah, um, uh, two ninety-three is authorizing, it, it's part of a, an overall push, a lot of our technology at the police department is, is, uh, seriously outdated, constantly breaking down. Um, this is a component piece that replaces the nine-one-one console, uh, which is obviously a critical piece of equipment, and the one thing probably more than anything you don't want breaking down. Uh, it's under state contract, it's good value, we've, uh, you know, vetted it through the vendor and through the police department, and, and it's just one step. Um, we're also in the process of, as you're aware, um, and will be coming soon with a recommendation on the CAT RMS, uh, but, but again, that, that's just another piece, and I think improving our overall public safety, uh, functions.
Well, the other thing is that we went to Caldwell, uh, saw a site that is currently using that system, and got their feedback as well.
Right.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levison, could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. The consent, the board has approved the consent agenda.
Thank you, um, we have one, I have one appointment to make tonight, um, which I'll formalize through twenty thirteen dash VP sixteen, um, which is my appointment of Kimberly Pryor as a trustee to the South Orange Library Board, um, so congratulations to Kimberly, the library board is, um, my first wave of getting involved in South Orange, and it's a lot of fun, so, look forward to, uh, hearing actually more about some of the really exciting projects they're working on right now.
So she's our next village president?
What's that? So she's the next village, yeah, I don't know if she knows what she signed up for. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
This special meeting?
Second.
Moved by trustee Cullen, seconded by trustee Levison, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can adjourn this special meeting, um, and begin our meeting. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Still here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnell?
Here.
Village President Torpey is here. Also in attendance, Barry Lewis, village administrator, Stephen Rother, village council, Adam Lerner, deputy village administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith, acting village clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash, dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on a bulletin board at seventy-six South Orange Avenue, and on the village's website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official, official action may not be taken.
Thank you, you got me present, right? Great. Um, okay, so I'll be quick, um, my report, uh, one of the things I just wanted to report back, uh, to the members of the public and to the other trustees about is trustee Levison and I met with, um, the superintendent of our school district, the president of the Board of Ed, um, and one of the committee members from Maplewood, um, to just talk about a whole number of issues, including, um, pilots and tax abatements, and just the entire kind of taxing system that is set up in our municipality, um, and the share of the school district budget between Maplewood and South Orange, and how the formula is derived by the state, and how we feel that we get kind of unfairly hit, um, not only in South Orange, but also just in general, with the way that some of these formulas are computed, about how state aid is calculated, um, and other parts of it. Um, so what we were just kinda talking about is making sure that, um, we can have some higher-level discussions with, um, between South Orange or among South Orange, Maplewood, and the Board of Ed, about what can we do to reduce the, you know, bottom-line, end-of-the-day bill that a homeowner gets, and that we all agree that it's not only important for us to bring our own budget in, you know, our municipal budget, which is twenty-eight percent of the property taxes, in as low as you can, um, but it's also important, uh, in general, that we wanna reduce the tax burden that are on homeowners, and whether that's the county tax, or the school tax, or the open space tax, um, or, um, or our municipal property tax. Um, and so we talked a lot about that, um, and kind of about strategies in the long term, and, um, you know, what we, one of the things that we kinda decided out of that, um, a couple of things, um, very kind of informal, um, is, you know, making sure that we have a discussion about, you know, every time that we're looking at doing redevelopment in our town, and we're thinking about, you know, do we need to do a tax abatement to get that economic investment, um, because once that tax payment is given, we can decide, we can actually decide to give them a percentage contribution if we want to, um, but we were not legally obligated to pay the schools anything. Um, and, you know, for the most part, the kind of history of it has been that, um, people feel as though those, uh, most of those are apartment buildings in the downtown, they don't really add much of a burden, if any, to the school district, um, and that those builders wouldn't build if they didn't have to pay a little bit less, even though the municipal government gets more money than they would have gotten if the person paid taxes, so, just throwing random numbers out, out there, but someone could, would've had an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar tax bill, um, and we would've gotten only twenty-five percent of that, about twenty-five percent of that. And so instead of getting two-hundred-thousand dollars, now, we've given a tax payment and we're getting five-hundred-thousand dollars, um, so all of that money, more money is coming to the municipal government, um, and while the developer or property owner is paying a little bit less. Um, so just talk about all those sort of things, and also making these kind of more regular meetings, um, some public meetings where we can talk about anything, and some kind of closed-session meetings when we're talking about contract stuff, um, between the towns and the school district, but ways that we can all work together to find ways to lower costs, um, and that we're really invested in doing that for our residents, and making sure to kind of recommit to them, that it's not just about our bottom line, but it's about the actual homeowner's bottom line of what they're paying in taxes. Um, so that's something that hopefully we'll have kind of more to update about as we have more of those meetings and discussions, but definitely a good thing to get us all in the room, talking about some of these things, I thought it was a good discussion.
Well, including, uh, lobbying the legislative body.
Right.
And giving more support to our school districts.
Right, right, so that, one of the ways that, um, we discussed that we can be of more value to the schools, um, is as elected, as municipal elected officials, going down to Trenton, um, and doing things like that, we get a little bit more of a soapbox than some of the school officials might get, um, so if we can work with Maplewood and kind of combine our powers and lobby the state legislature more for, um, policies that are[1687.26] legislature more for policies that are fairer to our school district, that we should definitely do everything we can to do so. Thank you for bringing that up.
And Seton Hall.
And Seton Hall.
No, no, in having more value added coming from Seton Hall.
Right, that was, right, that was another thing that the schools, they wanted to work more with Seton Hall, and in fact, there's a couple ideas we kind of tossed out there, and so getting the school district to work a little more with the university, and it seems like, I mean, today, tonight's theme is kind of university engagement, so hopefully we can bring that to the schools as well. Just quickly, we're going to be having a budget workshop, let's see, on the 16th, next Monday, and that's 7:30 in Village Hall, in the new Village Hall offices at 76 South Orange Ave. So we'll take a preliminary look at that. Mr. Lewis and I met just briefly with one of the co-chairs from the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee earlier today, want to make sure to kind of bring them into the process as soon as possible, and one of the things that has been something that I know all of us have been interested in doing, and I know, you know, for me personally, been very interested in doing, is finding a way to continue to make our budget more transparent. I think, you know, we're pretty well-louded throughout the state as having one of the, if not the, most transparent municipal budget in the entire state of New Jersey as it stands right now, but I think, you know, we could, we all agree we could do a little bit more with that, and that, that next piece is finding a way to get citizen feedback on discretionary items that we have in our budget. You know, we all sit up here, and, you know, you know, we'll hear a few folks come to a podium every once in a while and talk about an issue, yea or nay, and there are thousands of people in the community who may have very opinionated opinions on that, or thoughts on that issue, and aren't here to discuss them. So, you know, what I think we want to do with the budget, and this is an example of what we should be able to do with public policy in general, is get a wider group of people contributing their ideas and opinions on what we're doing. So it's not just a few people who come to a budget workshop, which tend to be, you know, very, not very well attended, and not many people come to our meetings and even talk about something, even kind of a little bit, little more of a hot button issue like tonight, it's still really not that many people compared to how many people voted on the ballot, or how many people live in this town. So if we can get more people to be part of that process, we can get a better sense of what people actually want us to do. And there are a couple, there are a handful of issues where we are totally handcuffed on what the costs are. There's a whole bunch of issues that are very, very small amounts of discretion that we have, you know, when we talk about salaries and wages for employees, those are negotiated through contracts with the unions, so we're talking about, you know, points of a percentage increase or decrease on a still only 28% of the overall property tax levy. So each time you kind of look at it, it takes another piece down, and at the end of the day, the discretionary amount of money that we have, you know, ends up not being that many things, but if we can get a better understanding of what people want to do with that, so like, street paving is kind of the example I always use when I'm thinking about it, is, you know, we have a baseline of how many streets we need to pave to keep the town safe, and how many potholes we have to repair, but beyond that, I would guess, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I would guess that it doesn't really matter how much we spend on it, as long as people are comfortable with it. Should we spend another $100,000 and fix another street or two? Should we spend another $200,000 or $400,000? What's the impact per homeowner, and would people be willing to pay a few dollars more a year, $5, $10 more a year, $20 more a year, if that means that we could pave X many more streets? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And for those sort of things, I don't think it's really fair to use kind of the anecdotal, here's the half dozen people who came to the meeting. So let's get it out there, let's do a survey, let's see how many people, if we can get 200 people to take that survey on what their budget priorities are in town, that is an enormous increase in how many people we've brought into our decision-making process. And instead of relying on things getting put into soundbites and misinformation being spread, you know, we can put out the information about the budget, we can educate people on the choices that we have to face when we have to make decisions about the budget, and we can bring people into the process in a constructive and educated way, and I think that's a value that we all share in doing. So we talked about doing that, there's a couple different options. There's one tool that, that we've looked at, and I've discussed here in this, in the board meetings a few times before, called Citizen Budget, and it's a way to collect information and feedback, and we can create all sorts of different questions, and what's kind of cool about it is people have to actually submit a balanced budget at the end of it. So part of the process is educating people a little bit about how to do a budget, and it would be great to see even some of the schools do a, you know, high school class or middle school class, take the project on and try and balance the town budget themselves, and maybe they'll figure it out better than we do. But, you know, a way to bring people into that process more, so that's definitely something that we're interested in moving forward on, and we'll be talking a little bit more about. I've spoken for way longer than I was planning to. And the last item here, the last two items, one is our new website, so we've got the website built out, we've created a new navigation structure for our website, the design is pretty much done, there's basically a punch list that's going to be done at the very end of it. So where we are right now is that we've got all the components done, we've created all the different templates for all the different pages, actually just today that was finished, so that when we start moving things over, we've got, you know, department-level pages and things like that, so everything is well-designed, then we can start moving all the content and fitting them into that. So that'll be a little tedious to do, but it'll be a great cleansing process because we have so much outdated information on our current website. So we hope that we're a couple weeks away from having what we would consider kind of a soft launch of the website, where we have content in there, where it's not live yet, but we kind of have the website and we're testing it out and making sure everything works, and a couple weeks beyond that, where we can actually get things live and good to go, and we'll make sure to, you know, obviously talk to people about how to use the new site, and I think we're really excited about how much better it's going to be than our current site. The other is launching public stuff, which we're pretty much ready to do, we're putting together kind of the press materials right now, the software is done, everything is set up, everything's ready to go. In fact, if you actually, even though, don't do it because we haven't really down, we haven't really finished the mobile app, but it's already in the App Store so that we can test it, you know, so it's all out there already, and we've gotten a couple people that have actually submitted requests via the website. And so we've got all of the workflows built out in the back of the database, we've got everything set up, all the users, ready to go, we're just looking at that last, you know, how do we launch it, how do we make sure people are informed about it, and so we'll be doing that very, very shortly, so keep your eyes open for that. I think we're all really, really excited about it. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, following up on the village president's comments on the budget, again, we had an initial meeting with the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, one of the co-chairs, I think it was a productive meeting. I'm in the process of putting together, again, as we get towards the year-end, things start to crystallize, we, we get the increases in the health insurance, we get our pension bills, we get a lot of the numbers, we get a pretty good handle on where our revenues stand for this year, project where the surplus and the fund balance will end up. So I will, and have, before the budget workshop, I will be providing to the board, again, sort of that compressed version of the budget with a memo, sort of explaining and highlighting some of the, you know, the pluses, any negatives, any hurdles we face, we'll share that with the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee as well. You know, so far, nothing that's alarming to me, but I'll let you wait to get all the details. As part and parcel of that, we've already begun the process with Batalia and the new financing, the new direction, and part of it will, I think, help simplify the budgeting process, but also sort of the reporting process, and the reports that we'll generate, and sort of the logic and the order of the account system and the structuring system and the reporting, it'll be much more intuitive, much more obvious that, to the board to be able to look at these reports. So that's, I think, another sort of positive offshoot of that agreement. Working with, in terms of the current capital project status, the Thornden, Ridgewood, Rinda, Kingsland, that project, you recall, we actually had on a change order, a deductive change order, and you'll recall, last, last meeting, we had a, we actually added an additional road, and we're still under the original budget, so that was very positive. That project, with the exception of Edgewood, I think the paving will, will have to wait until the spring. The Tyrell project, most of that work was completed, they were able to get the base cores of asphalt down before the weather turned, the final paving on that will have to wait until the spring. Number of the other IT projects we just talked about earlier, the CAD and the 911 console moving forward, as part of the budgeting process, and certainly with the, I think, support and of trustee Levison, his chair of the Finance Committee, particularly when we look at our capital budget, we, we will continue with our goal of paying down more debt than we authorize new debts, we, we're chipping away at a, at a pretty significant balance that, that we came in with, but we're making progress, and part of that is sort of adopting a use it or lose it type philosophy, and where we have departments that have, you know, two and three and four-year-old projects that are already funded and waiting in the queue, you know, that, I don't, I don't think we're looking to add to that, let's finish the ones that we have on the books now, and that, I think, helps us give, you know, gives us the ability to control that and stay within our means, but, so we're, and I think it then will, you know, provide the incentive for departments, you know, if you get, if you come make the case for a project and we provide the funding, then show us that you really needed it by getting it done. So that's moving forward. Couple other notes on the police, some of the ICMA recommendations, I think we're working through, and I'll leave it to trustee Cullen and her report to address it in more detail, but specifically, there is that one scheduling negotiation that's ongoing, trying to schedule a meeting, another meeting with them to follow up with the representatives of the two unions, but I, but I'm hopefully encouraged that we can make progress there. The fire department, as you recall, I have another meeting scheduled with them, and hopeful to have a recommendation as early as the next meeting, because their contract, current contract expires at the end of the year. Village Hall renovation, I, scheduling conflicts have prevented, I'm shooting right now for the 23rd to have Mr. Shapiro come for a presentation, he was not available prior to this, but we, we put that together. It's moving along, there were a couple hiccups with the abatement contractor and getting everything disconnected, and they're still waiting on PSENG to hook up their temporary power and do the final disconnect, but I, I think we've, with help from Mr. Rothen, we've worked through and made sure all the contractual issues and lines of communication and things are, I think, in, in good shape and in good order. We anticipate, we're done over there, I think, right now the ball's in PSENG's court, we hope to have that completed ideally this week, and then they'll, they'll move in earnest, and from that point, it's, it's really 60 days. At the same time, the plans and specifications for the prime contract, we're awaiting approval from DCA on the pre-qualification regulations, as soon as that comes in, the architects ready to issue the pre-qualification RFP and packages, solicit those, that process will unfold while the abatement's going on. Eventually, the architect will have a recommendation to this board to approve a certain number of, of pre-qualified contractors, if you will. Would anticipate then, they'll finalize the plans and specifications once the building is gutted and they can see what's behind the walls and the electric and the plumbing and whatnot, and then, so we would anticipate going out to bid, I think, on the prime contract sometime in early 2014. So it, you know, it's moving along, I, I think we're, we're going to, again, try and hold it to an aggressive schedule, we had some cushion built in, and I will have, I, I'm waiting for confirmation that we will have a, a formal presentation, including the construction manager, at our meeting on the 23rd. I guess in the interest of the evening, I'll leave it at that. Well, let me, just briefly, only because she's not here, and I'm sure she would want it reported on, and rather than me do it during her committee report, on a legal and personnel front, we are finalizing the new personnel manual with Mr. Rothen's office, we're down to just a few policies that need some legal review. We are, from a professional development standpoint, I'm happy to announce, we have a number, I think it's a total of four different training and professional development seminars scheduled in-house for all our staff and our department heads. I'd like to recognize our deputy administrator, Adam Lerner, who was able to coordinate that through the Stevens Institute and get it under grant funding, so we're really getting four different professional development seminars at no cost to the village, so kudos to Mr. Lerner. And I think it'll be good, and it's good for the staff, it's been thus far well-received, it was, you know, presented in the spirit in which it was intended, that this is a positive constructive, it doesn't mean we think you're, you're doing bad, only that we can do better, so I, I know trustee Davis Ford has been a, a real push behind that, so I'm sure she's, she's thrilled about it, and in her absence, I thought I'd report that.
Just a quick question, is that, do we have somebody from Stevens as actually being facilitator, or they're providing the content, or both?
They're, they're letting Adams lead.
Yeah, someone who's at Stevens with the, it's actually the Stevens Healthcare Educational Partnership, and they go out and do these professional development courses with a whole bunch of different nonprofits and healthcare institutes.
Good, that's very good, excellent.
And you know Deborah was excited about that, very much so.
Barry, I just wanted to ask again, you know, on the Village Hall renovation, I'd be glad when the, when it comes forward to do a formal presentation, but I would still like to have a project status timeline that we can keep informed, and it should be attached to the website, I guess, but we should have some kind of timeline of what the projection dates are, and I know some were missed and some were hit because there's delays that we can't control, like the PSENG right now, and so I still think we should have that timeline done.
Yeah, we'll do that, and we'll get that, and I actually talked with Mr. Wilkinson, our IT director, about trying to set up a, and there may be a public component to it, there may be a internal component to it in terms of limited to the board, depending on what issues are in, which particular documents, certain things have, you know, some content, contract negotiation-type strategies, some may have some legal implications, so that wouldn't necessarily have to be in a, but about setting up, you know, whether it be a Dropbox or through some format, because there's an enormous amount of paperwork that's generated, I, I won't even attempt to include you on the extra 50 emails a day I get on this, but in terms of the, from the, the construction manager, and as we get geared up, comprehensive minutes, milestones, scheduling, to put those in, in, you know, again, an aspect of it, maybe there's a public version that we're looking to put up and set up maybe on the website, that the public can access and kind of monitor the progress of the different project meetings and the schedules, and, and again, then there may be a separate component that would necessarily have to be sort of confidential within the board, but I did talk to Stan about that, I, I, we're, we're pretty confident it's relatively doable, and hopefully I'll have some announcement on that before the next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rothen, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one, one report, when we last had a trustee meeting, I reported that there was a, a problem with regard to the availability of water for the Third and Valley project. Last week, we had an all-hands, almost 20-participant conference call for almost two hours. Village Administrator, trustee Clark, and trustee Levison participated in, in that conference call, and the, the outcome was that East Orange Water is now proposing a reduced flow through the La France Avenue interconnection with Newark, but to augment that flow over time with a staged redevelopment of a series of wells in their wellfields so that they can in fact deliver the capacity that's necessary. The, the, the good news is that, given the flow that we do have now established through a hydraulic study that was done of the La France interconnection, we can augment the water from New Jersey American if, if necessary, so that at some point, whether it's through the series of rehabilitations of the wellfield or from other sources, we should be able to supply Third and Valley. It's a question of what combination of sources DEP will approve. We have another meeting scheduled where DEP is going to be coming back. They asked a lot of questions, they've been given a lot of answers, variety of information, and hopefully, at the next meeting, we're going to get something positive in terms of how they can approve sufficient water for Third Valley.
But that, that meeting specifically was called by the DEP, the special master was in attendance at that meeting, as well as East Orange Water, as well as Newark.
Yep. Special master, East Orange, all consultants, including the village's consultants who are on the line, in fact, the village's consultants weighed in on a number of issues, and so it, it, it was, all of the interested parties were on that conference call.
Thanks.
Trustee Levison, finance and IT?
Yeah, other than our, our normal status report of the various IT projects, which the minutes of the meeting can be found on the website, we had a presentation by Youthnet, and I think it was the consensus of the committee that to move forward with their proposal, that is, support them with a $15,000 annual amount of money for their budget, they have a service level agreement, they supplied us with a service level agreement, and that's what we're proposing for going forward for next year.
Did they request additional funding, or were they?
No, it's the same as last.
Okay.
In fact, they have an increased amount of workload that they're taking on for that same amount of funding.
That's great.
The, the other is, is that we're now proceeding, moving forward, and you can take, with what we're doing with the police department, within, you know, the implementation of a CAD RMS system, and the various periphery supports that, that goes around that. In fact, we had some meetings today with a fertile alarm company that has some equipment in the, in the police department.
Okay. Mr. Lewis kind of did the legal and personnel committee update. Trustee Rosner, planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, we met early in the morning of November 22nd, much earlier than trustee Cullen wanted to meet, but.
And the rest of the room minus you.
And this, this was done specifically to go over the proposed changes to the planning and, to the redevelopment plan. Susan Gru was there, Barry was there, village administrator, deputy administrator, myself, Steve Schnell, trustee Schnell, and trustee Cullen, and we went over each one line by line, and she sent us revision, the minor revisions of a couple of changes that we suggested and recommended that we move forward with those changes that were in that update, and we could vote on it at the next meeting for the first reading. At the same time, on a parallel path, send it to the planning board for their review, and if we pass it at the next meeting, then vote on it at the second meeting. And the major change to it was to, on, in the overlay zone, if you call it, on Fos, part of Scotland, part of Valley, and Third Street, to allow certain types of medical offices, and the other changes were less significant. But part of the thing that came out of it also was that we have to do some changes to our affordable housing plan, we're going to be meeting with a representative from Jeff Serenian's office in January.
No, it wasn't just medical offices, it was the office overlay, so it's professional services, it's not just saying, doctors go here, it's, it's allowing a different use other than just retail.
Right, thank you.
Trustee Cullen for public safety, and before you start, I just want to thank you for being the only trustee for sending in your updates ahead of time.
Which, which led to a cricket's kind of moment, because I know that you had requested it, but it does look like I'm the only trustee who has anything on the agenda, so that was a little awkward.
Pardon me for one second, I did send my comments to, I did send mine in to the person who took the minutes for the meeting to put on, to add on to the one item.
Okay, so we, we all, I, I don't want to end up in this situation again, so.
No, you're doing it right, so keep doing it, everybody else, please also do it.
Because I'm going to keep submitting my bullet points, but it looks a little off-kilter here, just a tiny little bit.
Bullets and public safety.
Public safety. So ICMA report, ongoing updates. One of the things that I committed to the board, I would try and do is close out the report that was commissioned, I don't know, about a year and a half ago now. And I think we're going to be in a good place by the end of the year. As Mr. Lewis stated, the one big piece that's still missing is the scheduling issue and the table of organization, and getting through that with the respective unions. And then, once that's complete, we can pretty much finalize everything, post it to the website, and hopefully move forward from that report. The public safety radio system consultant, RFP, I am very excited about that. That moved to a top priority for the public safety committee, mainly because we got a lot of reports from officers of areas throughout the community that are quote-unquote "drop zones." And that certainly should be a big concern to everyone. Outside the police department, the rescue squad also had stated that they were having this problem as well. And I don't think we have anybody within our village staff or on this board of trustees that can properly assess this on our own. So it would be a good time to bring in the professionals and do an evaluation. And as trustee Levison has reported, there's now state systems, there's networks that we can get on outside of our own infrastructure, take advantage of some of those things if they would make sense for us. It's great that our new fire chief has, appears extensive experience in radio systems and those types of communications, so we hope to leverage his experience as well. And we will have this RFP hopefully posted, Mr. Lewis, by this week.
Should be ready to go.
And I would thank you again for helping put that RFP together. I think it looks very good. Police headquarters, RFP. This was a question, because this came out of the ICMA report. It was in the public works committee. I thought the trustees did a great job working with the village engineer to prepare that RFP. And I just wanted to see the status update, if we're ready to post that. Has it been posted? Kind of the next series of expectations. I reviewed it, I sent Sal my comments, I thought he did a great job with it.
Yeah, I want to double-check with Sal though, before saying, yes, it's ready to go.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, do you know anything about the timeline of that RFP?
It should be shortly. Mr. Rother and I are just reviewing some of the legal boilerplate language, and to make sure that the village's current bid package is up to date and current. That's sort of an ever-changing regulatory environment out there, in terms of what are the mandatory submissions. So I think we can get that wrapped up this week. I think the substantive end of it is pretty well done, that Sal did. So that should also likely be ready to go by the end of the week.
I think we all responded positively.
Okay. Great. Next, and this actually goes to what Mr. Chandros had asked of me earlier in the meeting, to go lobby PSE and G, which I intend to do. I think it's a good suggestion. Mr. Chandros had attended the public safety committee meeting to address some of the concerns about lighting. And I think we've all heard it before, the gaslight outages, kind of the situation that it creates for residents at night when they're either walking their dogs or they're out in their neighborhoods. These gaslights are beautiful, but they don't emit the type of lighting that we need, so people feel very safe. One of the things that the village did a couple years ago, I believe under the public safety committee, was the whole Light the Night campaign. There was different walkabouts in different areas of town, assessing the type of lighting there. I would like to bring it back. If you have any suggestions about that, I was thinking more just like an educational campaign, encouraging people to keep their porch lights on as a first step. But then, as I thought about that, I realized then we've got our energy policy committee, and there's probably the appropriate types of bulbs that we might want to recommend to our residents if we're asking them to keep their lights on.
Well, we actually had Project Porchlight.
Yeah, we did, we did have a Project Porchlight event several years ago. I think at this point, we would want to suggest LED bulbs. But if we could, if we could go back to them and find out if they're still, basically, they were, they were supplying.
I bought one from the River, River Day, right? The packages that you guys?
Yep, yep. So we could perhaps dovetail that with an effort from the environmental commissioner, the energy policy committee, that it's about conservation. Because the one issue with leaving the lights on all night would be, you know, a conservation point. Basically, the best energy savings you can come up with is not using it to begin with. So if you do want to push a porch light always being on, then we want to also encourage people to use some type of LED alternative, because that's going to be the least, at least as far as the technologies go now.
And that's exactly what I was looking for. Can you, could you get some language from the committee and see what would be appropriate if we are from a public safety side, encouraging people to keep their lights on? And I'm working with Neighborhood Watch and Ms. Buckner, who was here earlier, to try and educate people about this. And we want to just make sure that we take the appropriate steps to make sure, you know, it's the type of energy that we want people using, and strike a balance, hopefully.
Yeah.
Just one comment about the gas lamps as well. We had a meeting with public service on the gas lamps. And one of the first applications that we're going to have under our 3-1-1 system, or South Orange Connect, is to be able to report gas lamps. And public stuff is going to put a process flow together for us, where the residents will report it through our 3-1-1 system, or South Orange Connect. And that will be forwarded to PSE and G, which is then going to have a follow-up, asking the resident if the situation was corrected, and if it was corrected, we can then log it and create incidents and statistics against that information.
Well, let me ask you. I was going to grab some volunteers and see if we could just go ahead and do what you guys did before with Seton Hall students, and just do a quick, like, just ride throughout town and note where the lights are that are missing. Like, what, I do think that there are a lot that are out right now. I don't think people take the responsibility necessarily to stop when they see one and they're driving real quickly and say, I'm going to report it.
We've made it easy by putting this application on a smartphone, and you can just record.
Give me, give me a real timeline on that, because I'd like to do something.
Now?
One month?
Two weeks.
Okay. And even if we do have the volunteers, we could still send them out with the application to also be able to submit it, correct, or no?
Yeah.
Go on their smartphone.
Yeah, just, and it will give you the GIS location, and it will send it off to PSE and G.
Because that would make more sense than having people try and write it down. Okay, can do that. And then the last part of that was also the concern about, and trustee Levison, I know you and trustee Clark have worked on this, I'm being caught up to speed on it. With the issue with the prototypes that you put in, what support do you need from the board or through the legislature, or who do we, who do we push this with? Because I do agree, it's an important issue.
The gas lamp, you know, this is what she's talking about.
Yes.
We have a meeting with public, PSE and G this week.
Thursday.
With, with our attorneys, and with our consultant, Gable Associates, to push forward and see if we can get the tariff changed. This is the last time we'll, I mean, this is at the level of the chairman of PSE and G.
Okay.
The next step is to now do press releases. And in fact, I have a contact now that we can do some press releases.
Like, what kind of press releases?
Getting the public to understand.
Do we want to do a petition? Do we want to go live with it? I mean, you know, that's my cup of tea.
Let's see what the result of this meeting ends.
Can you please keep me posted on how that meeting goes, and if we need to raise awareness or lobby on behalf of the residents? I feel like you've spent a great deal of time between the volunteers on the energy policy committee and yourself, that we should actually see some results at this point.
The big problem is, is that what we don't want to create is a change in the tariff, so that whatever we save in the gas consumption.
Yes.
Is now put back into charges in the maintenance.
Okay. Just keep us posted on how that meeting goes, and what next steps you think you need from the board. Review of the CERT exercise. I copied the board of trustees on this message. Andrew Boyarsky, the Community Emergency Response Team, had an exercise yesterday. It was coordinated with all of our public safety departments and organizations. And wow, he did an incredible job. He's very humble. The coordination was impeccable, the execution was wonderful. You never know when you're doing a quote-unquote "no-notice" exercise, how many people you're going to get. Like, is it going to be like three, four of us, just hanging out? And it wasn't that at all. I mean, there was about 30 people, correct, Alex? And of course, the village president ran the incident command, so just well-organized, fantastic. And this will likely come up in the budget workshop. One of the deficiencies that we found, at least amongst our CERT volunteers, was in terms of our preparedness and our own go-bags compared to some of the other municipalities, and even the Seton Hall CERT program, were lacking some items there. And while I realize the village president has a line item under OEM, I definitely want us to talk about that a little bit more, and what we could do to prepare the volunteers better, and also help in recruitment efforts. Because it's all about getting those numbers up, so that we don't have to rely on so many other towns to help us out.
Before you move on, I just want to concur, props to Andrew Boyarsky for doing a fantastic job organizing that. Speaking of volunteers who lack a lot of hours, it was, I have to say, it was a great learning experience for me. I think it was also great from the point of view of the various entities in the village working together to make that smooth. And thank you to our residents who volunteered their house to be a damaged home.
For the assessment. The next thing is, I'm not going to get into this too much, but from finance came to public safety, the request to Maplewood regarding the South Orange Rescue Squad, and perhaps contribution towards their operations. I did draft that. It's going to be directed to the public safety committee of Maplewood, my counterpart, and I've given that to both our administrator and our village president for comment. We'll see where it goes. It's basically very factual. We worked with the South Orange Rescue Squad to highlight all the calls for service, what the amount of the calls are, what types, at what point they're pulled in for backup or mutual aid. So it's a little bit more informative, and I hope that it helps educate the members of the township committee. And hopefully, they'll come back with some level of understanding of services that our volunteers do a great job of providing to them, and see where we end up after that. And the last thing was the, for those of you who caught the news record, great story on Seton Hall making a very generous contribution to our fire department in terms of a technology donation, so very much appreciated. Irvington Avenue updates. I think I can move this to the next meeting. You saw the presentation tonight, 600 surveys completed. But I'll add that to the next agenda. And then the senior citizens advisory committee, we had our first meeting on November 5th, really energetic group of people. And one of the first items that we are going to be doing is having a senior citizens forum, which is currently being scheduled. One of the things, or the gaps that we found in the report that was given to the new board of trustees, was we got a lot of feedback from all the people who serve seniors in the community. But one of the larger groups that we should have been perhaps sampling was the seniors themselves. And so the next step, as a part of this report, is better understanding what types of things that they'd like to see. We also have some great senior members of the committee who are just bringing such level of energy and enthusiasm. So I think we're going to be seeing a lot of really good things in 2014 from this committee. That's it. Not as long as you, right?
I hope not.
Ah, no, that was a killer.
Okay, trustee Clark.
Thanks, and just to counter that. There, due to conflict with municipal municipalities meeting, there was no meeting for the public works in November. So, very brief for me.
Very nice.
That's the bar to hit.
Trustee Schnoll, it all comes down to you.
We can't do that.
The fund committee.
The fund committee, thank you, trustee Calm. The recreation and cultural affairs committee did meet on November 26th. And just because of the holidays, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, December 17th. That's not the normal date of the month, but again, because of the holidays, we will be meeting the 17th. Before, actually, I go into a quick synopsis on the meeting, I do want to mention separately around the village alliance, just to repeat, village president Torpe mentioned, but I want to repeat again for the folks here on the stage, as well as anybody out in the audience, that tomorrow evening, again, is the village alliance's annual public meeting and holiday celebration. That will be from 6:30 to 8:00 on the third floor of Above. And you get to meet, actually, we met Bob Zuckerman, who came very briefly, but he'll be there. That's the new executive director for the alliance, and will be reviewing the 2013 programs, as well as the upcoming 2014 plans. There's an opportunity for folks to give any feedback or ask any questions, and there will be free appetizers and soft drinks and a cash bar. All right, that's the alliance. And then on cultural affairs, there's several very interesting things going on, cultural arts. One of, one of the interesting trends what's happening with Baird is, they're acting as an incubator. So it's happened with Giants of Jazz. It's also now, most recently, with La Cinematec, La Cinematec, which is an international film group.
A little too international.
I'm sorry?
A little too international.
Yeah, I get, sorry, French is just not my first language there. But they're moving actually to SOPAC, due to success. Really, what happened is, there's so many people who came in, were interested in participating. The membership was so high, it's actually being moved next year to SOPAC. So in January, that will be continuing there with, I believe, German films. The current gallery exhibition is Captivating Cosmos. This is curated by Seton Hall students, and it's actually, we got a nice little preview or review of some of the artwork. Trustee Clark and myself and several others got to see it. It's a very interesting exhibition, if you get a chance. We're going a little quickly, from the recreation group, the capital projects have been prioritized. There's quite a large list. As we enter into our budget timing, we'll be looking at that. One of the large decisions that need to be made is regarding the building itself, the Baird, particularly the roof and other necessary repairs. That's a major, something we need to consider. And after that, we're also looking at a couple other large items, including memorial park repairs, as well as the tennis courts, which are in very disrepair. After the meeting, we also took a little, quick little field trip to Chiswick's Field, which a resident had asked about the situation there. And it's a, it's a bit of a concern, given its condition, its access. There are several things that we want to look at, and see if there's some way to improve upon that. And then lastly, well, actually, just going into the winter season, which is kicking off, basically has been November, December, quite a few programs continue. We got four travel basketball teams, a middle school recreation basketball league, a high school pickup program, indoor lacrosse clinic for girls, grades three to 12, an indoor soccer program for adults, indoor soccer program for kids, Pee-wee tennis, and platform tennis outdoors is beginning in January. The last thing I did want to mention, the last couple of years, there has been a street fair on South Orange Avenue, where we closed South Orange Avenue for a stretch, and it's gotten mixed reviews. This is the point where I actually would like to get further comment from the audience, from residents, on what their thoughts are, that the village alliance is currently thinking to do a different type of event next summer. But in light of what we've learned from the market data center, the project that the village did along with Seton Hall, in some ways of reimagining Irvington Avenue, I wonder if there's an opportunity to actually use Irvington Avenue as the venue this year for the street fair. It might be a little bit different. We have a vendor who we could work with, so that's something I'd like us to consider. There's not a lot of time, because preparations need to be made, but I thought that might be an interesting try to get some energies together between the residents and the business owners, and to see if we could do a street fair.
Trustee Schnoll, do you think there's an opportunity to do both in a day that complements each other, where you can have different activities, and both the CBD and the businesses on Irvington Avenue benefit, or is that too complicated?
Well, I mean, as you know, there are public safety issues, they're closing traffic, there's a number of issues with street fairs, and that's part of the problem, and some of the actual business owners. It's sort of mixed. Some businesses have benefited, others have thought it's actually curtailed business. I'm just thinking, this would be a great time to feature Irvington Avenue, and they have an opportunity, we can bring in some music, and do some really great things.
Yeah.
And put a lot of energy into that. As I mentioned, the alliance is considering something, I think there is a date September 24th, for a special outdoor thing on South Orange Avenue. So I actually think they can be distinct, but we can look into them. And I think that that kind of thought.
Can I work with you on that?
Sure.
For whatever's on Irvington Avenue?
It could also be sort of a rotating thing. I mean, if you think about South Orange Avenue, Irvington Avenue, and also Valley Street as discreet business corridors. Good thought. Say it goes from one year to another. So that'd be something also that we might want to engage some of those volunteers that we already know about on Irvington Avenue, we might get them involved.
Well, it was part of, one of the four or five items that was on the hit parade.
The residents wanted the, well, there was the street fair that they wanted, and a farmer's market, too.
Farmer's market.
And we have the municipal lot over there, so.
That's right. Exactly.
Yeah.
And Saied's block.
So, that's it.
Mr. Nagim.
That's everything, unless there's any new business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night. Thank you, good night.
Congratulations on the short meeting.